Being Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975 Laws of the State of New Jersey. Planning Board Secretaries prepared a schedule of the meetings of the Planning Board at the Borough of Kennelworth for the year 2020 and has posted a true copy of this schedule on the bulletin board located at the front entrance of Borough Hall and has mailed true copies of the schedule to the local source in the Star Ledger and is maintaining a copy of this schedule in Borough Hall. Accordingly, the notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied in regards to this meeting. Can we have a roll call?
Do we want to do the pledge allegiance?
Um, that's fine. I mean, okay. Everyone, can everyone please stand to salute the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America.
We're just one nation, under God, indivisible, free, and just for all. Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Grimaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina? Oh, he's not here. Okay. Mr. Mazzio?
Here.
Mr. Ledouty?
Here.
Mr. Colletlo?
Here.
Mr. Skedary?
Here.
Mr. Zaharchek?
Here.
And Mr. Mahon?
Here.
Oh, hi Kevin.
So we do have Mr. O'Brien with us as well. I know Mr. Rego was trying to get in via telephone, but not sure if he's on yet. So anyway.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm on, so I'm muted.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, you might want to go on mute when you're talking.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rego is here. He's just.
Okay, he is. Okay. Um, so I don't know if our chairman, who obviously at last minute, you know, let us know that he was not going to be able to make the meeting. I don't know if he had any specific agenda items for the work session that he wanted to discuss. If he did, I did not hear about those. And I only have one thing to discuss, which is related to the Master Plan Committee. But I guess I'm just going to ask if, Mr. O'Brien, did you have anything? I see you. Hopefully, I'm not putting you on the spot. Did you have anything specific that you wanted to bring up in the work session?
There was only one item. Mr. Chairman, my apologies for getting on late. We had a few technical difficulties, as they say.
We all did.
Okay. Advantages and disadvantages of this. The only thing I wanted to let the board know about is that at this moment, we do not have any active applications for the August meeting unless somebody gets something in and then deemed complete and then get their notice going within the next two weeks or so. Just a heads up, there may not be an August meeting at this point.
Okay, thank you for that.
Is it okay if we carry the resolutions for, if we have resolutions for Blue Blade and Revirus, we carry them till September meeting? That, that, those would be the only two things that might be on August? But is it?
Yeah.
Is it okay to do them in September?
Well, we would expect them to be on for next month, of course, because depending on what happens this evening. But if it's not heard until September, it is not. It's not a fatal flaw. Let's put it that way.
Oh, okay. Good.
Okay. Thank you for that, Mr. O'Brien. Does anybody else on the, on the board have anything specific they wanted to bring up before I go into the Master Plan Committee?
Greg? I just want to let you know that Darren passed his class on planning.
Ah, yes.
I sent you that?
Yes, I, I did become, I did become aware of that. So Darren, congratulations on passing your, your class. And that allows you to remain.
There you go. Yeah. So you're not kicking me off tonight.
A board member, yeah. Because if you don't, if you don't get that, if you don't pass that, you can't serve. So great job and congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Well, I don't see any other hands going up for any other business. So, so just to let everybody know, I think, hopefully, the committee members. Did you guys all get my word version of the master plan? Did anybody get that?
No.
I sent it to your Kennelworth NJ emails, I believe. Frank, you're shaking your head. So you got it, Frank?
Yeah, I, I saw it.
Okay.
I got it, Greg. I'm about three quarters of the way through it. I'm taking a look at what we've got. So.
Yeah, so just, thanks. So Rob, if you haven't looked at that email account, Rob?
Uh, I, I got on, I'm on and off, I'm back on the off session again. I gotta contact the.
Oh, I see. Well, I mean, if, if I have your other email, I can send it to the other email. But I did send it to the Kennelworth, you know, NJ email address. I know that for sure.
If you have a chance, that'd be great.
Yep. No, I definitely will do that. So for those who may not recall, I had committed at our previous meeting to transcribe all of the committee's notes and comments from our committee meetings into a Word version of the document. And I believe I committed to do that by July 15th. So I think I'm, I'm ahead of schedule, but I could be off on that a little bit. But anyway, the, that was the plan. And then the next step was obviously to, once I had that, to circulate it to the committee members. I believe I copied Mr. O'Brien. I don't know if you, but maybe not. I'm sorry. I think maybe I just sent it to the committee members so far. But we do have to, for, for their review. And then the next step was to have a meeting, I think with the chairman and Mr. O'Brien. And then kind of review what the committee's work was, had done before finally sending the Word document to all the board members. And then we'd move forward from there. And obviously, the intent would be that the full board might have additional comments or changes to the, to the plan that they would like to see implemented. Obviously, the committee, what we put in was a consensus of the committee. And so hopefully, I didn't miss anything. They were, you know, of course handwritten notes during the course of the committee meetings. And like I said, so if anybody on the committee was taking their own notes, you just may want to ensure that I have the same notes and that they're there. Or let me know and I'll, I'll add them and recirculate it. So the, the Word version should have been sent to you with track changes on so you could see, you know, what I modified. There, there are not only changes within the, within the text itself, but there are a lot of comments that are added as well. So in some cases, you'd just have to look at the comments. It may have been a question that we had that we need clarification from Mr. O'Brien or from Mr. Rego. So anyway, that's where we're at. Does anyone remember, you know, if we put specific dates in there? Again, I thought I remembered the commitment to get that transcribed by the 15th. I do not recall when we said we wanted to meet as a committee with the chair and Mr. O'Brien. Did we, did we set a date on that or we need to set a date on that?
There's no dates that I'm aware of, Chairman.
Okay.
Yeah.
Frank, you, Frank or Rob, do you remember any?
No.
There wasn't a date set. I just had the 15th as the date for you to
Yeah, okay.
supply us with the document. And then I wasn't sure we went from there, although we were kind of, Rich was kind of pushing for a date for the next step.
Yeah. So what I'll do is I'll contact Rich. You know, if you guys can commit to, you know, doing your review. I don't know. What do you think? Is it possible by end of the weekend? Today's Thursday or middle of next week?
Sure.
Let's say middle of next week. So that'd be the 15th is the date where I was supposed to be completed. So we'd be a little ahead of the schedule. And then I'll reach out to Rich to see when he would like to have, you know, that initial meeting between us so he can see what we've done and, and discuss it with Kevin. And then, you know, again, we'll, we'll bring in the full, full board after that.
Sounds good.
So again, for, for me, that's all I really had to bring up in this work session.
And thanks for putting that together, Greg. Kind of be difficult. So thank you.
Yeah, no worries. Like I said, it's, it's all in a day's work.
Yeah, nice work.
Thank you. Like I said, I hope I got everything. There was one comment, now that I think about it, which there's an abbreviation. And for the life of me, I can't remember what the abbreviation stood for. So when you get to that, I think the initials are IDC. So if you see that, I'm like, what is that?
National Building Code.
Ah, there you go. So that's, thank you for that. So anyway, someone wants to write that in there because I put the acronym and I was like, I don't remember what this is. So anyway.
I don't care.
No, IDC. All right. Well, actually, I'll make that update and, and along with any others that come my way. So again, we're, we're pretty good. I see Mr. Pantina has joined us. I didn't see him previously. Hi, Nick. Did you get all that, Nick, about the Master Plan Committee? Can you hear me, Nick? Oh, he's gonna, he's just connecting. Yep. Can you hear us, Nick? You on mute?
Nice.
He's gone. And Jim Watson popped up.
No, he moved over.
Oh, he did. And I gotta go into a. You there, Nick? There he is, I see.
Oh, there he is.
Nick, go into your settings and raise the volume on your microphone. Because you're unmuted, but we can't hear you. Just a guess.
Hey Bob, I'm glad you finally got to that haircut.
Yes. It was legal.
As opposed to.
I actually went to.
I kinda like the hat. I like that cap you had on. Looks sharp.
Um, I went to a client for the first time after a haircut and they've only seen me during Corona. And the wife was like, oh, I didn't, I didn't even recognize you. I'm like, okay.
Well, Nick is, Nick is kind of bouncing around. I'm not sure what the issue is. I know when you come in, it does ask you if you want to use your computer for audio. I wonder if he clicked on that. But we're not able to hear you if you can hear us, Nick. Wave your hand if you can hear us. Okay.
You can hear us if we can't hear.
Yeah, yeah, that's the issue. Yep. So we're, we're not starting our regular meeting till 7:30, right?
No, 7 o'clock.
Oh, we're going 7? Oh, okay. Well, we only have four minutes to go then. So. Are we going right into the, the public meeting from this session? Yeah, okay. So Laura was going to try to get us into YouTube one more time. So did you hear that part, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is Lou Rego on?
He was by phone.
He's still there.
Yeah, the phone is still there.
Okay. Yeah, he's muted, but he's on. Nick's going to probably have to call in using his phone if he can't get his computer working. Well, how about if we adjourn the work session? Can I have a motion to adjourn the work session?
I move to adjourn.
Okay. Yep. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All right. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, work session is adjourned. And I'm showing 6:58 for the public meetings.
Mr. Chairman, I have been working in the background and I have been unsuccessful in getting onto YouTube Live. As I stated earlier, we had the same problem with a council meeting. And at the time, the Borough Attorney did assure us that as long as we were recording, and I am currently recording, we can upload it at a later time. But every effort has been made to connect. I don't know if that is, if it has anything to do with the storms that we encountered and some of the glitches that we did, the surges we did have at Borough Hall. Or if it's just strictly a Zoom versus YouTube issue.
Okay. Thank you for that. One minute to go.
Mr. Chairman, earlier you were asking, you had mentioned the parks. The parks are open, the facilities are not. The rec department is going out there daily and sanitizing just the playground equipment.
Okay. So kids can use the playground equipment? Is that what you're saying, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll let, I'll let the school know.
I believe Kristen has been in touch with Mr. Gennella.
Okay, good.
And expressed to him all of the protocol that they are following. And I believe they're also, they have discussed the Senate, the sanitizing product that they're using and shared that information with them as well. We're using a fogger, a backpack fogger.
Oh, wow. Okay. Very good. All right. Well, I'm showing 7 o'clock. So I think we can start the meeting. So I'm going to start by reading this new version of the Open Public Meetings Act. So in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by mailing the annual schedule of meetings and by electronic advance notice of at least 48 hours pursuant to NJSA 10:4-9.1 as permitted during a declared emergency to the Star Ledger, Union County, local source, Kennelworth website by posting such an annual meeting schedule on the bulletin board in Borough Hall. Reserve for such announcements and by the proper filing of said notice with the Borough Clerk. Formal action may be taken at this meeting. If you wish to attend this virtual meeting, please click on the link, which I guess at some point we will, or we display it. And let's see. So there is a link to the meeting, but that, anyway. Or you can call the number provided. Clicking on the link provides visual and audio access and allow you to comment and/or access questions at the proper time during the meeting. Calling the number will allow you to hear the meeting and also comment and/or ask questions at the proper time. Yeah, I can't obviously give the link, but the phone number is 908-276-9090. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision in decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Okay, can everyone stand to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I mean, I.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free, and justice for all.
Okay. Can we have a roll call?
Mr. David?
Here.
Mr. Grimaldi?
Here.
Mr. Pantina? Is here. Mr. Mazzio?
Here.
Mr. Ledouty?
Here.
Mr. Colletlo?
Here.
Mr. Skedary?
Here.
Mr. Zaharchek?
Here.
And Mr. Mahon?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum to proceed. So our first agenda item is approval of, what does that say? Approval of February, June, June 11th, 2020 minutes. I guess that means. Can I have a motion to approve the June 11th meeting minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Mazzio, second by Mr. Skedary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so move. Our next item is a resolution. Resolution is authorizing the board planner to conduct a redevelopment study. I believe this is a memorialization. And is that Mr. Rego? No, okay. And so at this point in time, can I have a motion to approve the resolution, which will, again, will authorize the board planner to conduct a redevelopment study? We discussed this obviously at the June, the June board meeting and, and authorize it at that time. But this is the formal resolution. So again, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Grimaldi, I believe. And I see a second by Mr. Colletlo. A further discussion. Mr. O'Brien, do we need a roll call on this?
Uh, yes, because it will involve spending money. Chairman, may I ask for a, an amendment to this? We had talked about having the study within three months of when I was authorized to do so. Since, since this is July, three months would be October. If we could amend that to the October meeting date, that would be in accordance with everything we've discussed so far.
Okay, I'm looking.
That'd be paragraph two. Kevin?
Two and three, Mr. Rego.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we can just change September to October.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so under Section 2, it says September. We're changing that to October 2020. And under Section 3, again, it says September, changing that to October 2020.
That's consistent with our past discussions, Mr. Chairman.
That's, that's fine. So we did have a motion and a second, but it has now been amended. So we have a motion on the amended resolution. Mr. Grimaldi, make the motion. Do I have a second on the amended resolution?
Seconded.
Okay, second by Mr. McMahon. And Mr. O'Brien informed us that we do need a roll call. So. Kathy, call the roll.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Grimaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
He's waving his hand, yes.
Yes, okay. Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
Mr. Ledouty?
Yes.
Mr. Colletlo?
Yes.
Mr. Skedary?
Yes.
And Mr. Mahon?
Yes.
Okay, so that resolution passes. Our next item is communications. And Secretary, do we have any communications?
Well, we did receive a thank you note from Councilwoman Cesari for flowers that we sent on her daughter's passing.
Very good. That's it. Kathy?
That's it.
All right. Thank you for that. So we can move on to old business. Under old business, we did have application number two, which was a certificate of nonconformity. Carmela Arali was the applicant, 409 North 15th Street. It's my understanding that the applicant has withdrawn her application. So, Mr. Rego, Mr. O'Brien, do we have to take any official?
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to find out probably from Kathy if all the escrows and any other fees that have been due and owing are paid for Arali.
Um, I am not 100% sure, Mr. Rego. I would have to check with Ellen to see.
Technically, under the law, when an application is before a board and they want to withdraw, it's similar to being in front of a judge. A judge has to say, okay, you can, you can withdraw. In this case, I have no problem with the board voting on a withdrawal subject to it being determined that, that all of the fees, escrows would ever have been paid. So I don't, I don't want to cut them loose until that's been confirmed. If, if it hasn't been, then we can say, look, you're still on the agenda. We're going to carry you, but you, you gotta pay and then we'll get you off. But, so I, I would have that condition.
Okay. Did you have anything to add, Mr. O'Brien?
No, sir.
Okay.
I want to make sure Kevin gets paid.
I see Mr. Gr, I see Mr. Grimaldi has his hand up. So go ahead, Rob.
Just a question. Now, we had testimony that at some point, this house was technically being used illegally as a two-family home. Now they're pulling their application. Do we do anything?
All of that, if there are zoning issues, whether they withdraw or not, doesn't make those issues go away. I mean, the fact that someone comes in front of this and it's determined inadvertently that there's some other problems that we don't know about, by withdrawing, you just, they did, they just can't bury their head in the sand. If there's an issue, if you want Kevin or one of Kevin's vast staff to go out and take a look at it, it, everything's in place still on that end of it. If she has a two-family, rather than a mother, daughter, and whatever the difference is, then they have to take care of that.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. David, I would like, I would like them to, to look into this because, I mean, we had enough of the neighbors in the area come up to our meeting. We're talking about the two-family house. So I think we should at least buy someone to go take.
They opened the door and it's not going to close by them withdrawing. So that, that, you know, so I think it should be, let's confirm all the payments. And number two, if, if the powers that be want that looked at further, then more power to them.
Mr. Chairman, it's Steve Hale. Our office has represented her. If I could just perhaps update. Great to see every bone, by the way.
Same here. Go ahead, Mr. Hale.
Yeah, we, that was, we did send in the letter of withdrawal. And our client was actually in municipal court and, and that matter was adjudicated in, in municipal court. Kevin, I think you were there that day. So.
The, the matter was actually carried, Mr. Hale.
Well, that's, yeah.
The, the applicant offered to certify that the building had reverted to a one-family and that there were no renters in it. And the municipal prosecutor and your colleague were working on a, an adjudication of that.
Yeah. And we'll also confirm on the fees that, that they are paid.
Okay. So Mr. Rego, do you recommend that we go forward with?
Yeah, I, I would say. Yeah, we can give the withdrawer a blessing. I would still, just in case Steve doesn't have, and I'm, I'm totally comfortable with, with that representation. But just in case, I think we can cover all of this. It's subject to the fees being current. And so the professionals can, can be paid what's owed to them. And on the other issue with the municipal court, that sounds like it's being worked out, I hope. And if not, Kevin's available to, to do what needs to be done.
But I guess my question, Mr. Rego, is so should we just carry the approval of the withdrawal for another month? Hoping that we have, you know, we have. Hoping that we have, you know, we have confirmed that all fees have been paid and maybe the municipal court case has been completely adjudicated? Or do we just go forward in approval with the conditions and then, you know, I don't know who's following up on the conditions?
Since we may not, since we may not meet in August, I, I don't know if it's, if it makes a lot of sense to carry this for two more months. I would say let's get it off our plate. My suggestion is to get it off our plate now. I would assume the escrow, whether it's current or not, can be found out pretty quickly. If someone, someone can probably determine that tomorrow, if not Monday. So my suggestion would be to just act on it tonight. Motion to allow them to withdraw subject to fees being current and that's the end of it. The other aspect is not in our bailiwick right now.
Okay, so would someone like to, well, it's the board's pleasure, would someone like to make a motion that Mr. Rego just outlined?
Sure, I'll make a motion to carry what Mr. Rego said and release this.
With the conditions, yep.
With the conditions, yes.
Be current, yeah, that the escrows be current.
Very good, do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay. I guess we should do a roll call?
Yeah.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Ghamaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
Mr. Ladouti?
Yes.
Mr. Colletta?
Yes.
Mr. Skedary?
Yes.
And Mr. Mahon?
Yes. Right, motion is passed. So that brings us up to new business. We do have two cases this evening, two applications under new business. And the first is application number two dash 20. And the applicant is RJB Nivas, hopefully I'm pronouncing that correctly. LLC 121 South Michigan Avenue, Block 135, Lot 13. So is the applicant present?
Yes, present.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, you're, you're stuck with me on this one too.
You're like a regular, Mr. Hale.
Yeah, yeah, and the next one, just one, one quick point of order, and Lou, I'll flip it to you. I believe that you're, on your agenda, your work session starts at seven and your formal meetings start at 7:30. I just wanted to.
I, that, that crossed my mind earlier, but, you know, on the agenda it said, you know, 6:30. Maybe wasn't the site plan committees, weren't they meeting at 6:30 to seven? And then we did our work session from seven to 7:30 and the meeting started at 7:30? I'm not sure.
No, I, yeah, yeah, I mean, I actually questioned earlier. I was familiar with our public meeting starting at 7:30 myself and.
Okay.
We, it was.
When we advertised for this COVID-19 for the Zoom meetings.
We changed it.
The time earlier.
We did. That's correct.
We advertised for this in the, in the.
All right, Steve, when did you notice for, seven or 7:30?
7:30, so that's where I'm saying that, do we?
Oh.
I mean, we're 15 minutes.
Yeah. Were both of your cases tonight noticed for 7:30?
Correct.
Okay, and Mr. Chairman, we're going to have to do a soft shoe for another 14 minutes. Is there anything else, because we really can't, can't start it until 7:30. If, if someone of interest wants to join in, they may, and if, if Steve starts now, they may miss 10 minutes of his testimony. So is there something we can occupy ourselves with for a while?
Yeah, I do have a question, but I see Mr. Ghamaldi's hand raised, so I'm going to let him have the floor for the moment.
Lou, I believe Laura said we're having a issue with the live feed right now. So it's not going, it's not going out publicly at the moment. So they're all, everybody's going to see it at the same time once this is uploaded after the fact. I don't know if legally that means any difference, but Laura, correct, we're not live at the moment.
Yeah, that's correct.
Due to technical difficulties.
That's correct.
Okay, explain this, if we start right now and get going, from 7:30, if someone comes on and wants to see the Nevis application, would they join it 15 minutes into it or would they be able to, to see it from the beginning through some, some mechanism?
I believe they will not be able to see it until after this is over and it is uploaded after the fact.
Ah.
Correct.
Right.
Well, as long as someone can, so we're not going to have any public tonight, is that it? Because of the lack of live feed?
That is correct.
Ah. Well, okay.
Unless they join the Zoom meeting.
Yeah. But if someone joins a Zoom meeting at 7:35, they'll be hearing these applications 20, 15, 20 minutes in, right? I mean.
Well, let me ask, I, I don't know if we can get ahold of Laura, if she's able to speak, but.
Okay.
Can, can anyone join this Zoom meeting? I mean, I didn't think this Zoom meeting itself is, is it posted on the website or a website that somebody could get in?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do believe it was posted, it was also advertised.
Okay, great.
So if anybody wanted to get in, they should be able to because the password and the meeting numbers were provided.
Okay, great, so then from my perspective, Lou.
Hmm? I'm sorry, Steve?
No, this is Greg. So from my perspective, yeah, from my perspective, we should not be starting, I don't think we should keep debating it. We should not be starting until 7:30.
I agree.
With the action.
As said, I would agree also.
Yep. So I did have a question, Mr. Rego, which actually I wanted to bring up in the work session and completely forgot about it. But we're trying to straight out protocol in, in terms of how the board runs its meetings in terms of the members. So obviously we have regular board members and then we have alternates. And frequently, when we're doing roll calls, we're, we're asking for people to vote in numbers higher than, you know, nine board members. And.
Yeah.
And also, from my days going back when I was mayor and beyond, and before that, we used to follow the protocol that if a regular member was not able to attend, then alternate number one stepped in to fill that position and so on. If there were two, alternate one and two, and so on. And, and I don't know if that's a requirement or is that a protocol? But I don't think we've been following it.
Okay.
Not in all cases, so I want to get.
Let me, let me, let me say this, Mr. Chairman, the municipal land use law does require alternates to be numbered. One, two, three, and four, depending on, and in our case, we would, we have the right to have four alternates. They are and they should be numbered. And the law requires that if a regular member's not there, alternate number one, assuming he or she is there, steps in. If alternate number one's not there, it goes to number two. And that was promulgated to prevent, for lack of a better word, cherry picking. Where if a chairman knew that number, alternate number three was more simpatico with their view than alternate number two, then he would pick three. Or she would pick three. So yes, we have to go one, two, three, and four. As far as voting with a planning board, when, when we are a planning board, no more, there can't be any more than nine votes. Sometimes, I, I've worked with boards where they maybe have 11, 10, 11, 12 people. And when there's a roll call, they call everybody and it's the last, let's say there's a dozen. The last three votes don't count, but some board secretaries and boards like to make everyone feel that they're involved. So they'll let, they'll let them vote knowing it's not, it's, it's, it's not going to count. I don't know if that's a good practice because it makes things confusing. I think when we're wearing our zoning board hat, which will be for the second application, no more than seven can vote. When we wear a planning board, only, only the nine, only nine members should be called. Whether that's all regular members or combination of regular members and alternates. So, but alternate, it's, it's a, it's, it makes a lot of sense. Also, with re, with reorg, a lot of boards think that everybody can vote. I've never taken that position. With a planning board, no more than nine votes, with a zoning board, no more than seven. And, but everyone can participate in terms of discussing things, asking questions, trying to persuade the board one way or the other. But when it comes to voting, I, I think we should stop it at nine for Kenneworth. You know, that's, because the vast majority of what we do is when we wear our planning board hat. So, yeah, nine, nine should be it.
Okay, thank you for that. I mean, that's what I basically, again, recalled, but I didn't know if that was, you know, just a protocol that's followed or if it was actually written in the code or anything, so I think you clarified that.
The law is clearly alternates, one, two, three, and four is clearly set forth in the land use law. Now, do we, do we number our alternates?
Yes.
It's not.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Then that needs to be followed.
Okay. That's what I, again, that's what I thought, but I wanted clarification this evening.
Okay.
I thank you for that, and I think we've been pretty fortunate in that our group of regular members and alternates generally attend our meetings. So we often have 11, 12 people attending our meetings. And in the past, we have been, not in all cases, but in a lot of cases, allowing, you know, all, everybody to vote. And again, I just wanted to see if that was what we should.
Yeah, you run into an issue, I, I've worked with a board, like 12 members show up, there's an application, everyone's called, let's say it's six-six. Well, you, you got to sort out then, you got to put the toothpaste back in the tube and figure out who are the, who are the, who's the member that maybe, you know, shouldn't have voted and it gets kind of complicated. So keep it, keep it at the number.
Very good, I think, I think you've made that very clear. So we will, we'll probably have to bring it up with the chairman when he's back.
Sure.
Whether we meet in August or September, but I do think we should start following that protocol going forward. All right, well, that killed a little time. I see Mr. Pantina is waving his hand. I don't know if we're going to be able to hear.
Tell him to write on a sign, he can hold it up.
And Nick, we can't hear you.
Mr. Pantina, if you engage the chat option at the bottom of the screen, you can chat to everyone in the group.
Yeah, you'd have to type a message, Nick.
Maybe his volume is off?
Yeah, I mean, it's, like I said, I know when I joined the Zoom meeting, it asked you if you want to use your computer for audio.
Yeah.
And I don't know if he's getting that and didn't select it or if he selected it and there's an actual issue, but there's definitely a problem. See what he's saying, I can't, can't read that, too small, says.
Hang up and try again.
Oh, okay, I see it, yep.
Log off, log on.
Yep. Yeah, hang up completely, Nick. Log off the computer. Okay, four minutes to 7:30 according to my clock.
Is Kevin there? Kevin?
Yes.
Do you know any Irish lullabies you can kill four minutes with?
I think in Kenneworth, it's preferable that the vowel is at the end of the name.
Okay. Well, Mr. O'Brien, what, I do have a question for you. So I know this board's function is not for zoning enforcement, but I just wanted to ask the question of, are we, are we doing active enforcement as I travel through our community? Seeing a number of industrial properties that are not being maintained. So I wonder if you can comment on that.
Sure, Chairman. Zoning enforcement in Kenneworth is done in response to complaints that we receive. We are not on active patrol, driving the streets, looking for nonconformities. But when people call in, the complaints are actually registered and noted, they're given numbers. They go to the zoning officer and they are investigated, photographs taken, report written, and if necessary, a notice of violation is sent. And if not, the complaint is closed down.
Okay. So then if I have complaints, I have to submit them to you, I guess, right?
Submit them to the building department and they will be logged and they will be investigated, sir.
Very good.
Like any other citizen.
Yep, thank you. All right, I got three minutes to see if Mr. Pantina is back.
Mr. O'Brien, when.
Can you hear, can we hear you now, Nick?
Mr. Ladouti had a question?
Yeah, I just, I know with companies that are, what about companies that are out of business? The property, I mean, who maintains, are we, can you do anything about those properties? If I come up to you and say, it is properties, it's abandoned or it's gone and, but the, but the area looks terrible where it is?
Absolutely.
And like, who's your spot, how do they get, how does, how does that get cured? If there's no entity left or they're bankrupt or whatever?
Well, if, if there is a foreclosure or a bankruptcy, there is an ultimate owner, which typically would be a, a loan holder or a bank or some other financial corporation. And Kenneworth does have a marvelous ordinance that requires the banks and financial institutions to maintain the properties. And one of the tasks of the zoning officer is to update the list of foreclosed properties, vacant and abandoned properties on a quarterly basis. We investigate them to make sure that they are indeed vacant or, and if they are vacant, if they're being maintained or if somebody now inhabits them and they're being maintained. So that is an active investigation regularly.
Great, thank you so much.
But, but Mr. Ladouti, if you see a problem and something's not being maintained, we, we may, we may have been there three months ago, we haven't gotten back. So please let the building department know of anything that you think is a nonconformity.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we're at 7:29, so we got just one more minute to go here. Is, is everyone from the applicant side ready to go? Because I now have 7:30.
Yes.
We're back on.
We're your role. You want us to begin?
Yes, please do.
Wait, let me ask Kathy if notices, has notice been reviewed, Kathy? Notice and public, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Lou. Again, great to see everybody. Just want to briefly give an overview of, of this application and your situation that this, this property presents. This is a, a request to have a, have a property being occupied and a certificate of occupancy issued without, without a garage. It's a unique property on South Michigan Avenue. It's a very narrow lot, it's only a little over 33 feet wide. It's also on a corner, so it's got the constraints of a narrow and a corner. And in fact, I did have an opportunity to speak to Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Van Acker about, about this application. The, the, it was a very small garage and the old Zoom picture showed it.
Mr. Hale, sorry to interrupt, can every, can everyone who's not speaking mute themselves? Because I'm hearing a lot of background noise, so.
Yeah.
Just let Mr. Hale have the floor, please.
Thank you.
Yep.
So again, it's a unique piece of property, did have a very small garage at that location. And the reasons that we're, we're mainly seeking, and Samantha will take us through a little bit of the history of the property, is for the reasons that I've mentioned, extremely narrow lot. Off-street parking, when the, the house was purchased by Samantha and her partners and renovated, they did apply for renovation and demolition permits for the main house. They did not realize, and I did discuss this with both Kevin and Victor, that a separate demolition permit was needed for the garage. But what, by not having the garage, it, first of all, is an issue of safety. With this small, narrow piece of property and a garage there, backing out of that garage and onto the side street is, is, presents a problem, and Mr. Watson will cover that when he goes through the plan. And secondly, parking is a premium in that area. And secondly, parking is a premium in that area. You've got the corner lot, you've got the, the stop sign out at, out at Michigan, and therefore, that'll, that limits parking on the street. And we feel that by not having the garage, it gives us the ability to have more onsite parking, and also the safety issues. And, and also, this, many of the, the homes in that area do not have, do not have garages, and Mr. Watson will, will touch on that. So we feel that the benefits of not having a garage are certainly outweighed by, by trying to, to stick a garage on there. And I, and Mr. Watson will touch on this, too. Any such garage would most likely trigger a number of variances, because it's, you've got the two front yards, setback requirements and the like. So we just think that it's a better planning to have this house, which is now renovated, is under contract to be sold, they did a great job renovating it, was a tiny two-bedroom house, they made it into a two, a three-bedroom home. So that's, that's an overview of the, of our request before the board this evening. And if there are no preliminary questions from me, I'd like to call upon Samantha Burns, who I see is here.
As far as the game plan, I'm assuming you're going to have two witnesses, that's what you mentioned?
That's correct.
Okay, that's all I need to know, thank you.
Thanks.
Could your witness raise your right hand, please? Assuming it's up. I can't see.
Yes, I'm raising my hand.
Okay. With regard to this matter, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth to help you, God?
Hello?
Yes?
Hello?
Pardon?
Oh.
You have to say it. Yes, sir, I do.
I can't hear anything.
With regard to this application, do you swear your testimony shall be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
My name is Samantha Burns, S-B-U-R-N-S.
Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Lou, do you want to do this staff as well? Sorry to.
Yes. Kevin, do we have you and Chris?
Victor.
There?
Victor's on board.
Oh, Victor's on, but okay, if you could both raise your right hand with regard to this application and the following application, do you swear any testimony or comments you make shall be the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
I do. Victor E. Van Agra, I'm filling in for Mr. Quado this, this evening.
Thank you.
Nice to have you, Victor.
Long time no see, guys.
Yep.
And ladies.
Yep.
Where?
Okay, Mr. Hale, if you'd like.
Oh, there's, I'm looking, I'm trying to find out where she went. Now, Ms. Burns, you're a member of the LLC, that's the applicant here?
That's correct. It's RJB Nevis LLC, but the house has been purchased under RJB Nevis 121 LLC.
Okay. So you heard my introduction and overview of the request. If you could first just give a little background of the condition of the property, the house and the garage when you purchased the property, what permits and approvals you applied for, and what you've now done to the home to improve it?
Yes, of course, Mr. Hale. We purchased the property on the 7th of December, 2018. And the condition it was at the time we purchased it was very, been bad, poor condition, there was renters in there, the owners were living out of state, so it's been left for the renters to take care of, but they'd not done too good a job. So everything was starting to really look bad shape. So we purchased the property and had architects do a full plan of taking the house up a second level. And because of the setbacks, we had to do a unique design in order to build the house correctly with regards to all the setbacks and the regulations for Kenilworth, which we wanted to make sure we abided by. And the plan was to keep the garage as it was in its current condition. But upon closing on the property and starting to do the renovation, and obviously knocking down the second story, you know, the top story where the roof was, and starting to build the framing out, we discovered that the garage was leaning to one side and actually starting to lean more than it initially had when we first acquired the property. And the perishing of the wood structure of the garage, as well as the roof, the condition, and the concrete on the inside, everything, it was, it was dangerous, it was very dangerous. So we told everyone to stay clear of the garage, not to put anything in it, or remove anything out of it in case there was going to be an accident. So everyone maintained the construction purely on the house until such times as we were able to evaluate more closely the garage. We built a whole second story with three, two bedrooms upstairs, with a two full baths upstairs. And we also downstairs kept the initial layout, just by opening up the second bedroom that was downstairs to make a kitchen, living, dining room area, which is very nice, very open plan. Lot of people have paid us a lot of compliments on the design. We put a deck on the back of the property, keeping within the regulations of the setbacks, all the permits required, the building permits, the electrical, the plumbing, everything, the demo permit to, to do the work on the property. And we passed all of our inspections, and we currently have the property under contract since March. And the closing date is scheduled actually for tomorrow, but obviously, we're waiting to be able to close as a result of the variance being approved on not having a garage. Because as you said, it's, we believe it's dangerous, because we had a lot of comments from the neighbors when we were doing the renovation, that they were complaining that there was too many cars parked behind them, where they were trying to back out of their driveway, they do not have a garage. And we were in the way of them, because we were parking in the street, because there was no room to park on the property. And also, with the intersection there, it's quite a busy street. There's a lot of traffic coming up and down, or downs one way. There's a lot of traffic always coming there and to the intersection as well. So when we further evaluated the, this whole inconvenience of, with it in its current condition, we decided that it would be better to demolish the garage, which would then enable us to have parking on the property, reduce the, the hazard of having the street parking, but also, in walking around the neighborhood, before we did that, we noticed that majority of the properties in and around that area, at least within a one to 200-foot radius, do not have garages either. They sometimes have no garage at all, or maybe a small utility shed on the property, but there was quite a few properties without a garage. And so we demolished the garage that we had before there was any accidents, as soon as the, we had word that the rest of the house had been completed, and we now had the dumpster empty to put everything immediately into the dumpster and not to leave a mess on the property.
And, and since you've completed the renovations, you've maintained the property, and obviously, it's in much better condition than, than when you purchased it?
Yes, it's almost a brand new house, there's, everything's new.
And obviously, there's going to be people that are buying, or looking to buy it and live there in Kenilworth, correct?
The buyers have already had it under contract for two months now. They close, they're closing on their property tomorrow, their buyers are closed, and they, they have no intention of wanting a garage. We asked them whether they would like a garage there, they said, no, they don't want a garage, because they prefer the off-street parking. And so, and.
I think Samantha.
For variance approved. Hello?
Yep, now, it looked like it froze for a second there.
Hello?
Yes.
Oh, I thought I'd lost it. Sorry.
Okay. And I know that we've received and reviewed the, the reports from both Harbor Consultants and Mr. O'Brien, and I don't think there are any technical issues, Mr. Watson will cover those in his, in his testimony. So I have no further preliminary questions of Ms. Burns at this time.
Okay, thank you.
But now, the board and/or public may have questions for you, Samantha.
Right, does anyone, does any board member have a question for Ms. Burns? We're not seeing any hands go up.
I'm just curious if they have any pictures, that she said that the garage was in bad condition, so do they have any before, like, pictures before they tore it down? I don't see, I don't see them in the list.
Samantha, did you?
There are. Yes, my associate who takes photographs all the time of the property has photographs on Google Drive of the property. I can't, I haven't looked to see if there's one in the garage, but I'm sure there is. He would be able to give further information on that.
Maybe that's something that, do we have the ability to, I see Hitel is on, to post, while, while we go through some other things, to find that and maybe post it, so the board can take a look at that?
I do see a couple other hands up. I'm going to start with Mr. McMahon. Did you have a question, Mr.?
I don't have a question, I just want to comment. I did look on Google Maps, and you, if you actually look at the house on Google Maps, interestingly, you can actually see the new house from the Michigan street view. And if you go look from the side street view, you can actually see the old house and the old garage. And I, it is kind of beat up looking, but you can go on Google Maps and see both houses actually, interestingly, because the Google photos were taken at different times.
Interesting.
Yep, very good, thank you for that, Mr. McMahon. Mr. O'Brien, was that what you wanted to comment on? Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions for Ms. Burns? I see another hand waving, Mr. Grimaldi. Go ahead. Mr. Grimaldi, you on mute?
Yep. Unmuted myself. Um, let me ask a question. So this is a variance for proceeding forward without a require, an ordinance required garage. But is it up to this board, or up to the zoning officer, that the garage was taken down without the proper permits filed or, and such? Is that going to be addressed during this meeting?
Mr. O'Brien, is that, oh, we're seeing the Google, Google Maps pictures, board members. So that's the South Michigan shot of the front of the house. So we're not.
If you go further north on that, you'll see the side of the house and the old garage.
There we go, said it.
Yeah, the other side of the street.
Yep, you had it, just circle back the other way.
You have to get on Michigan to show the new house and the old garage at the same time, though. Now turn around. Keep going. There you go.
Yep. Got it.
Well, are we going to, does this board address that, or is that something that's part of a conditional at the end, or?
We had, we had a demo permit for the house when we started the construction.
Well, you just testified that, I thought you just testified about not, somebody, I thought, stated that they weren't aware that a demo permit was needed to take down this structure.
That's what I heard as well, thank you, yep.
Yes, Mr. Grimaldi, that's when, when, in, I think it was Mr. O'Brien's report, asked whether or not a permit was, a separate permit was obtained. And when I discussed it with Samantha, she indicated, yes, they did get all appropriate permits and approvals, demolition permits for the house and the additions, but they didn't realize a separate demolition permit was required for the demolition of the garage. And then, obviously.
That's correct.
As a condition of the CO, if this board's kind enough to grant the application, then, then the Kenilworth would be, be in a position to issue a CO to have the transfer of the property without a garage.
Okay, but again, is somebody going to address the fact that, and is this for this board, or for the zoning officer? Or is there a fine for just doing what you want without a permit?
So Mr. O'Brien, can you answer that? I see your hand up.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Grimaldi, this matter started with an application for a zoning permit to have a property without a garage. That was denied, and the recourse from that is to apply for a variance, which is what is happening this evening. Should the applicant be successful in their pursuit, then this matter is over. Should they not be successful, they have to construct a garage and come into conformance with the ordinance. There's no penalties or fines at this point, none are anticipated. The primary focus of zoning enforcement is to bring properties into compliance.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Skidery, I see your hand up, go ahead.
My question for Samantha, you stated earlier that you looked through all the regulations for the town before building this house, and had a special design to keep everything in conformity. So obviously, you knew there was a requirement to have a garage, so I, I don't understand why you wouldn't have just made the repairs necessary. Is there a reason you didn't repair the existing garage and just decided to knock it down? Or demoed it with not having any plans to rebuild anything?
At the time that we submitted our plans, the architect made sure that all, everything was built in accordance with Kenilworth, and they discussed that with us. The property, the garage itself, looking upon it without in detail, it looked like it could have been repaired. But when we started to repair it, we realized that all the wood was rotted, and that it would need to be demolished. But in the, during that timeframe, we then had had the problem with the neighbors, with the parking, with the on-street parking, and it was then realized that it would probably be better, because the garage, we measured it, it would not take a car, not a modern-day car. It's so small that currently, the pad is still there, but if I parked my car on the pad, I'd be jutting about two foot outside of the garage. So we leave, sorry, I'm echoing now.
One, two, three, four, testing.
Yeah, we hear you.
Did you get that?
I did, yep.
Okay, sorry.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Skidery?
Yes, it did, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Burns?
I have no questions.
Mr. Raygo, I see you lit up there, you have something or no?
Oh, no, I'm just, I'm just sitting here listening.
Okay, very good. So, Mr. Hale, I guess you can move on to your next witness.
Yes, thank you very much, and thanks, Samantha.
Okay, I'm going to go on mute.
Okay. I'd like to now call upon Mr. James Watson.
All right, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Watson, could you raise your right hand, please? With regard to this matter, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. State your name and last name, just for the record.
Sure, James Watson, W-A-T-S-O-N, licensed land surveyor in New Jersey and New York, and a professional planner in New Jersey.
And Mr. Watson, I believe you've testified on numerous occasions before this board, but if you could brief, briefly provide your credentials?
Sure, like I said, I'm a licensed land surveyor in New Jersey and New York, a professional planner. Appointed positions over the years, I've been the planner for the Township of Union, the Borough of Carteret. I've also been appointed planner for the Township of Warren, public advocate. I'm out with Steve probably seven, eight nights a, a month. I've been before Kenilworth three or four times in the last couple of years. I don't know if I've been before you guys recently, but I, I know I've been before the Board of Adjustment.
Well, it's a combined board here, so.
Yeah.
That would be us.
Yeah. Okay, so I would offer Mr. Watson as a professional surveyor and planner.
Board, we're okay?
I'm looking around.
I think we can proceed.
People's, their spots change, so. Okay, so, Mr. Watson, you've heard my opening, you're well familiar with the application, having prepared the plans, and heard the testimony of Ms. Burns, and also had the opportunity to review the report from Mr. O'Brien, and from Victor at Harbor Consultants. If you could provide the board with an overview of your, of the plan survey, I think you have knowledge of where the garage was and the size of the garage, and then you could, for the planning testimony.
Sure, not a problem. If Laura could put up the plans, I'll just take you through the plans quickly.
Laura, can you hear me? There you go.
There you go. All right. Starting with the cover sheet, typical cover sheet, we have a list of owners within 200 feet in the upper left-hand corner. Below that are some general notes. Center of the sheet, you have the tax map, which did not come through on the PDF, but you also have buildings within 200 feet, and you show the zoning boundaries that are within 200 feet as well. Upper right-hand corner is a key map. Below that are the names of the owner-applicant. Immediately below that is the approval block for the chairman, secretary, and engineer. Our title block with the table of contents is in the lower right-hand corner, and in the center of the sheet at the bottom, you'll see the scheduled general requirements for the R5 zone. You'll notice that everything that is, requires a variance denotes that it's an existing violation. I'll talk a little bit about that later. Moving to the next sheet, this is the, this is actually a survey of the property. There are no proposed conditions, so we didn't show anything as being proposed. You can see the two-story frame dwelling that's currently there. To the rear of that, you see a paved driveway, which is about 24, 25 feet wide. There's some new curb put on either side of it. The concrete pad that's shown in the southerly corner of that driveway is the location of the former garage. That garage, outside wall to outside wall, was nine feet by 18 feet. Subtract eight inches for each side for the concrete block that was on the foundation, so you're looking at a garage at a minimum that had seven feet, eight inches inside to inside across, and about, about 16 and a half foot depth, if you consider the eight inches across the back and eight inches across the front. Typical car today would not fit in there. That garage was also set back six and a half feet from the right-of-way line of Passaic Avenue, so you really didn't have room like you normally do in a residential setup where you could park a car in front of your garage. Like I said, the lot's 33 feet or inches wide by 125 foot deep. Setback for the front of the building is 17 and a half feet, and it's about six feet from the southeastern line of Passaic Avenue. That's pretty much it for the plans. Before I start testimony, does everybody understand what they're looking at or have any questions?
Any, any board members have any questions?
No questions. Okay, so, Mr. Watson, why don't you move on to describe the, what we've already indicated as a proffer on the benefits of having no garage here from the, from the parking and safety and...
Sure, not a problem. I'd like to talk about the lot before I get into that. Again, keep in mind that this is an undersized lot. We have 41, 4,166 feet. 5,000 feet is required. It's a corner lot. That creates problems. It creates two front yards, one along Passaic, one along Michigan Avenue, and by your ordinance, you really don't have a rear yard. You have a street side yard, and you have a side yard, and then you have the two front yards, like I said. It's a very narrow lot, 33.33 feet versus 50 feet, which is contemplated in the zone, and the garage, like I stated, was undersized. The footprint, outside wall to outside wall, was 162 square feet. Your ordinance requires a minimum of 240 square feet. Keep that in mind. That size, that nine by 18, that I was talking about, is actually the size of a parking space, a minimum parking space that's required in an outdoor parking area where you have room to go past the lines. You're not restricted. So using that garage today would be nearly impossible. You probably could pull the car in, but unless you climbed out the back window, you probably wouldn't be able to get out of the car. Also, keep in mind, if you look at Sheet 2, there's a building envelope on there. That building envelope is six feet wide. You couldn't put a garage on that property today without a variance. Actually, you probably couldn't even put a shed on there without a variance right now. The original dwelling was built in 1928, so I think that things were not anticipated in 1928 that are realized today. I believe that we can comply, and all of those things I've just stated, go to C1 for hardship. We have an exceptionally narrow piece of property here. It is unusual in the zone, not uncommon, but it is unusual that it is so narrow that you can't build anything, and the unique situation affecting this corner lot is the two front yards that are required on Passaic and on Michigan Avenue. We can also apply for relief under C2. We have to talk about a number of things. The first is a specific parcel this has to be related to, and I think you can look at this and realize this is not a typical lot in Kennelworth. It's an exceptionally narrow lot, and again, two frontages make it almost impossible to comply with anything. Next, we have to talk about positives of this application. I believe that you get them from the municipal land use law. I believe that we comply with A, which is to encourage municipal action, guide the appropriate use and development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. With this application, I believe we comply with that general welfare and safety statement. The old garage was in poor condition, like Ms. Burns said, and was falling down. Providing three off-street parking spaces is much better than having the old one off-street parking space with no availability to park in front of the garage at all, which means you would have to pull into the garage to get out of the right-of-way. Keep in mind, backing out of a narrow garage like that with basically seven-feet entrance facing Passaic Avenue, you'd be blinded until you got most of your car all the way out and into the right-of-way. So that's an extremely unsafe condition where you couldn't see cars coming from the southwest. Keep in mind, Passaic is a one-way street going in a northeastern direction. If you were on South Michigan Avenue, you couldn't turn off onto Passaic Avenue and go down. Like I said, with the new setup, there are no sight problems. You can see both ways for pedestrians and other oncoming cars. Again, positives for general welfare, you're updating the older antiquated house, bringing it into modern times, make, and repurposing it. You're giving it more bedrooms, you're making it a better market value for the town, or for the borough. Next, I believe we comply with E, which is promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions, and preservation of the environment. Layman's terms, that streetscape, do we match what's around us? And the answer is yes. Within this lot, within 200 feet, you have 28 lots. There are 11 of those lots right now, which is 40% that don't have garages. They mirror the situation that we're providing here. They expand the parking to get more cars off the street, and they allow entrances from either side streets, or they basically put a shed at the end for, for all of their, I guess, storage needs. But like I said, there's 11 of these lots that, that do not have garages, and they don't provide garages other than the open parking. Next, I believe we comply with I, which is to promote desirable visual environment through creative development techniques, good civic design and arrangements. Basically, the new design, I think, is very creative. It allows for flexible use of that rear yard. So if they're having somebody over, if they're having a, you know, an occasion to have a party or something or in the backyard, they can move the cars out, and you can actually have a usable backyard there. The old garage kind of cut that yard in half and made it extremely difficult to do anything with more than a few people. I think the creativity of just getting rid of the garage, paving across the entire thing, making it accessible for, if kids want to play there, you want to have a picnic, you want to do anything, and also allowing you to park three cars there, getting them off the street. Keep in mind that one parallel parking space is 24 feet long, and in this case, you're losing a space on the street, but you're getting three cars off the street with the situation we have. Finally, I believe we comply with M, which is to encourage coordination of various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with a view of lessening the cost of such development and the more efficient use of land. Again, everything is in place here. The only thing what we're, we're asking is to eliminate the garage, and if, I mean, I've had houses for close to 40 years now. Everybody knows what happens with a garage. You never park a car in it. You put all your stuff in there. I, I think everything is in place. There's no new utilities needed. There's no curb cuts needed. Everything is done and in place now, and I don't think you will have any problems moving forward with this. Looking at your master plan for some other positives, parts of your master plan talk about, give me a second, ensuring that new residential development is consistent and compatible with the existing neighborhood character, and like I said, 40% don't have garages. The house was updated and upgraded, but it still matches the streetscape, and it was not expanded on the footprint, just going up to add the extra bedroom. Your master plan also encourages the preservation and maintenance of all residential properties, which Ms. Burns testified to, that this was in disrepair. They updated it, fixed it, and it's actually on the market and has been sold. That was the second thing we had to talk about with the positives. Next, we have to talk about negatives, and with this application, I don't believe you have any negatives. Light, noise, traffic that are generated by residential use in a residential zone are already contemplated. There's nothing out of the ordinary with this application. And just to recap quickly, the hardships that we have, it's a narrow lot, deficient in area. We can't build a conforming garage, let alone a shed. The old garage was outdated. Like I said, it was too small for modern vehicles, plus it was in a state of disrepair. And again, you're on a corner lot, and your restrictions make it very, very difficult to build anything here. Recapping the C2, we're modernizing an old house. Flexible use of the rear yard is a plus. You're getting three off-street parking spaces, removing the dilapidated structure, and like I said, it's not out of the ordinary for this area. 40% don't have garages, and it's an easy fix for an old awkward setup. Like I said, that garage was in the middle of the backyard, and it made things very difficult. And we actually meet some of your master plan goals, and when you weigh all of this out, I think you'll agree with me, now looking at a C2 proof that there is no substantial detriment to your zoning ordinance or to your master plan, and I hope you agree with me that this is an easy application to approve. That's it. Thanks for paying attention.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. No further questions at this time. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, great. Does any board member have a question for Mr. Watson? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands go up. Mr. O'Brien, do you have any questions? Nope. Okay. Mr. O'Brien, just a question for me. Is the addition of a second floor, that's not an expansion of an existing non-conforming use?
All I can say is that in this particular case, permits were issued, and permission was granted for this to proceed last year sometime.
Okay. I don't know that that answers my question.
I'm trying to dodge it diplomatically. I think many planners would consider a new structure within a setback to require a setback variance, but in this case, it was not asked for, nor was it, nor was it required.
Okay. Yeah, I just, well, that's fine. Any, any other questions before we move on? And I see no one. Okay, Mr. Hell, do you have anything else? Oh, Mr. Grimaldi, sorry. I see your hand up. Are you on mute, Mr. Grimaldi?
I got it. Did I hear testimony correctly that the planner said they're going to maintain three off-street parking spots?
Correct. The paved area in combination with the concrete pad that's there provide three off-street parking spaces.
Now, this is where I guess I want to ask Victor and Kevin. So tomorrow, if all goes well for them tonight, tomorrow this site is going to be sold, and the new owners have no obligation to us, and they could put up a fence and eliminate those three off-street parking.
Could I chime in?
I would offer as attorney that, that the resolutions are, are a condition of that approval, and that would be something that they are, they are bound to, bound to, Mr. Grimaldi. I'll defer to Mr. Rago, but...
Yes, assuming everyone can hear me. Yeah, the, the, if the board approves this, it's approving the property. It's not approving Ms. Burns. It's not approving the new buyers. It's approving the property. So if this is approved by the board, and the new buyers would need to be made aware of it, so they're not buying a pig in a poke, then they're bound, we're binding the property. We're not minding anyone individually. So they, the new buyers would have to comply with whatever conditions and approvals this board puts on the property.
So we can make that a...
Unless they come back in and want additional relief, but that's putting the carpe for the horse. And one of the conditions would be, if this is approved, that the, that the, that there would be constantly three maintained parking spaces on the property.
That was my question. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. O'Brien, I thought you had your hand up, or you go ahead?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Rago has corrected. If that happens to be a condition of a potential approval by this board, then that would have to be dealt with by subsequent owners. In addition to that, any subsequent owner can certainly file a permit application for a fence or a shed, and it would have to be reviewed to see if it was consistent with the ordinance or not.
Thank you.
I have, I have some comments, though. If you look at the width of this curb-to-curb driveway, it's 28 feet. That's the width of the roadway. That's a lot of pavement behind a home. I'd like to see this moved down to only two-car wide, not three. There's no other home in the area with a three-car-wide driveway. It's making a sea of parking behind a home. Now, I wouldn't mind if they put a masonry deck in there, but I would like to see the curb cut limited, even though there is no curb, the opening on a roadway limited to 20 feet.
Victor, just, I just want to point something out. Like, unlike most of the other lots in this area, you can't stack your parking here.
I know, but it'll still give you two, what I'm saying, I'd like to get only two spaces off the road, and not three. It's a, it's a, that driveway with the roadway, of Passaic Avenue.
I understand. Keep in mind, Passaic has parking on both sides, so...
It does. So why have a three-car driveway, three-car-wide driveway, when you have parking on both sides? And I've been on Passaic, and I, there is parking, sufficient parking. I mean, why have three, it creates a three-car-wide driveway, 28 feet. That's wider than Passaic Avenue.
Right, and one of the thoughts in the process was, we were going to try and comply with RSIS. You need two and a half spaces, round up to three. That's why we went with three spaces.
Then you could do, or then you could build a garage and do two and a half RSIS, so let's not go there.
Well, you can't build a garage. There's really no rule.
You can build a garage, and you can ask for variance in a 33-foot-deep lot. You can't, you can build a 20-foot-deep garage and ask for variance for it, yes.
Right.
So you can build a garage. You can't say you cannot build a garage.
Well, I meant, without variances. I meant without variances.
Right, right. But you need, but also you need variance for the curb opening. You got to, you ask for a 28-foot-wide driveway opening. If you look at the street, I'm looking at Google Earth now. It's, nobody has anything near that. Closest thing is maybe 18 feet. I don't see why we couldn't do a two-car, a two-car driveway and a patio for the tenant, but not permitted at all to be parking. but not permitted at all to be parking.
When I testified about flexibility, they may use it that way. Because the.
I'd like, my comments are that I think it's way too wide. I don't ever remember in Kenilworth permitting a 28-foot-wide driveway. I just don't.
On behalf of the applicant, but whatever the words desire, I think that area, part of it is used as in essence a patio right now, Victor.
Yeah, but I would, I don't want to see it come all the way out to the street. I want to see it necked to make it 20 foot wide at the edge of, at the edge of pavement.
Okay, so I think, Mr. Venager, you made your point, obviously.
That's my, that's my comment, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and I think you made it well. So ultimately, it'll be up to the board to determine if they want to proceed with proving it as or with modifications. So we are seeing a picture of the driveway with the garage still there. Okay, does any other, does any board member have any additional questions for any of the witnesses? I see Mr. Pantina.
Can you hear me yet?
Yes, now we can. Hooray.
I've been heard. I feel blessed.
Attaboy, Nick.
How are you, everyone? I would have to agree with Victor. And I think that, and I passed by the lot. And at first I thought that, yeah, the garage would have been small from what I saw of the pad, but 28 feet is kind of wide. And the fact that there is no curb out there, I mean, even if they narrowed down the driveway and locked off for, if there was curb there, if you put curb in front of where the old garage was, you could easily get two cars in there and you could even swing them around and probably maneuver more cars too. But I agree with Victor on that note.
Victor? Do I ask Victor a question?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Grimaldi.
Is there anything limiting parking within X amount of feet of the corner?
Yes.
That's normally a traffic issue, distance to a stop sign. But they do have sufficient depth to get a couple of cars on the street.
From the, from the edge of the paving now to the stop sign, there's sufficient enough space for parking?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions, board members?
I think I saw Kevin.
Yeah, I see Mr., I was just seeing if the board members had anything. All right, I'm not seeing anything. Go ahead, Mr. O'Brien.
To answer Mr. Grimaldi's question, there's a 50-foot setback from the stop sign back. There's no parking allowed. And that occurs on both sides of Passaic Street from Michigan to the west.
Just for a point of information, I have the old survey and I measured the old opening. It was 28 feet. It's the same as it is now.
But that said, if we're 50 feet from that stop sign, we, between that and as we all have noticed, this lot is undersized. We might be pretty close to not having a spot there.
Right, I'm getting about 60 feet from where the stop sign would be to the beginning of our driveway. So at 24 feet, you would be able to get 48, just shy of three parking spaces. So you get 48 feet for two of them, then you'd have 12 feet left for the next parking space, if you will. And again, I think it's a more efficient use if you're pulling three cars off the street.
Again, we would defer to the board as to that configuration. And again, if the board is kind enough to approve the application, we'll also know, no issues with respect to it. Obviously, running with the land and binding on the property, the buyers.
All right, well, if, at this time, if there's no other questions from the board and no other testimony, then we can, I guess, open it. I can make a, request a motion to open the meeting to the public for comment. Nothing else? All right, then can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Motion made.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Grimaldi. Do I have a second? By Mr. Mazio. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, the meeting is open to the public. Laura, how do we let the public know that they can reach out to us?
If there's any public present, they can just raise their hands or turn on their cameras or they can participate via the group chat.
Okay, thank you. All right. I don't see anyone, visually, I don't see anyone raising their hands. I'll assume there's no public and I'm not seeing, anyone seeing anything coming in on the chat?
You look good, Greg.
Yep. All righty, can I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing? Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Mr. Mazio. Yep, do I have a second? Mr. Colallo has a second. Okay, we have the motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved, the public portion of the hearing has ended. And at this time, I'll ask the board if anyone would like to have further discussion or if anyone would like to make a motion to either approve or deny the application.
Do our professionals want to weigh in on anything else on this?
I just wanted to see if Mr. Hale wanted to make any closing comments or if he's resting on the evidence.
Just, just very briefly, Mr. Ione, thank you, board members. Again, we truly appreciate the board meetings, particularly in this forum, to allow us to make this presentation. And we appreciate the feedback from the board this evening and from the board professionals, both prior to tonight and tonight. And we feel that this is not only an improvement by the renovation of the house, but the elimination of the garage, eliminating a safety issue and also providing additional off-street parking. And we think that the justification for the variance to eliminate the requirement of the garage has been provided and look forward to the board granting this application so the house can be sold. Again, no problem with the condition of it running with the land. So as Mr. Grimaldi said, somebody doesn't come and fence it off. And we leave it to the board as far as Mr. Venager's comment. If the curb cut wants to make a wall or make that area where the pad is a patio, again, we leave that to the board. So thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. So as I said before, is there any more discussion the board needs? Or would someone like to, again, make a motion either in favor or against the application? I see Mr. Pantina's hand up.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance with the narrower 20-foot driveway width.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second on that motion?
Again, understanding on the narrower width, is that on the, where's it going to be reduced from, from the Michigan Avenue side so that we have some room there? Or are we removing the concrete pad?
Probably the Michigan Avenue side because to make that a little bit more greener on that side, you can saw cut that, remove it there.
Yeah, we.
Let them, let them come back with a plan that meets, you know, a nice patio back there or something. Because I'd rather have, when you walk out of the house, you just don't walk into a car. You walk out to a patio. So I think if they move the parking further away from the home, further away from Michigan Avenue, you have a nicer, smaller patio area behind the home as soon as you come down the stairs.
How many parking spaces onsite would there then be? Two or?
There would be two. You're just trading a street space for an onsite parking space.
Okay.
And keep in mind, if you want, we could just put a fence coming off of the house, come back eight feet and then right angles out to Passaic Avenue. That would eliminate the parking space.
I'd like to see that asphalt removed. I'd like to see it saw cut and taken out.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're removing the asphalt too on the patio?
Just along the street frontage. You can saw cut that. The eight feet that there now and that, they would cut it with a masonry saw and then remove that and just plant it with some shrubs and some chips.
So do we want to, Mr. Pantina, your motion, do you want to maybe steer it towards, based on the engineers' recommendations and?
Yeah, I, yeah, so how about we do this? How about we, I make a, I retract my motion. I make a motion to approve the use variance based on our borough engineer's input regarding where the driveway should be and how much of the existing asphalt should be taken out. Does that work?
Does that work? Is anyone willing to second that motion?
Yeah, I'll second that.
I think that if, if you do, like Victor mentioned, come off of Michigan Avenue, you might even be able to get a parking space at, you know, between 50 and 70 feet from the corner and then have the driveway opening and then have two more spaces on the street behind, behind the driveway opening.
But we're going to want to see revised plan. Well, Victor's going to want to see a revised plan for that area.
Right, contingent to the approval, that's all.
And the engineer, right? Would that be part of the?
Yeah, the engineering review and then we should have, eventually, we should have for our records, a revised scheme, a revised plan for that back area, just so we know what's going on. We need the baseline.
Right, it'll be like resolution compliance.
Yeah, we don't have to review it again, but it should be here.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on that? All right, I guess we'll have a roll call vote. Madam Secretary?
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Grimaldi?
No.
Mr. Pantina?
Yes.
Mr. Mazio?
Yes.
Mr. Ladouty?
Yes.
Mr. Colallo?
Yes.
Mr. Skedary?
Yes.
Mr. Mahon?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much and see you shortly.
Thank you. All right, so that wraps up that application. We do have another application on the agenda. The next application is application number 380, variance number 4-20, Blue Blade Steel, 109 North 8th Street, block 60, lot 2.01. And Mr. Hale, I believe, is on board again.
Yes.
Are we good on notice, Kathy? We're good on notice, thank you.
Well, again, great, again, great to see everyone this evening. And by the way, yes, I was getting the previous app, Samantha and the crew. If you want to drop off, you're certainly welcome. This is an application for the installation of a small generator and liquid nitrogen and hydrogen tank in connection with Blue Blade Steel. Paul and importantly, a little background, Blue Blade has been a corporate member of the industry for quite some time. They've been there, their site very well. It's again, an important business. And the request here is important for them to continue and modernize their business. They use this product in conjunction with their furnaces. They already have the liquid nitrogen and hydrogen at their facility. These are just upgrades to that. All safety protocols, all met. They're actually installed by the suppliers. And again, all appropriate safety mechanisms are in place. We have received the reports from Harbor Consultants and from Mr. O'Brien and Kevin. And we'll address those, but generally have no, no issues with them. And we'll explain in more detail where we feel is necessary. So, and I just want to introduce the team. Probably can see them all up there. Lindworth is in the middle of my screen, the principals of Blue Blade. Rick Pollan, also from Blue Blade, is here. And Ed Deck is our site engineer and Nick Raviano is our professional planner. That's an overview of the application. I thought what would be good is if we could have Mr. Pollan give a little background on Blue Blade, its history in Kenilworth and why these upgrades are necessary.
Can everyone hear me? The history, the history of Blue Blade, I'll go.
Do we have to swear in, Mr.?
Your name.
I'll just say one thing first, just so there are no glitches along the way. We are, we are sitting as a board of adjustment because this is a use variance application. I understand the Class 1 member is not here and the Class 3 member cannot participate in this application. So, and when it's, when it's completed, Kathy, we're only calling seven members. I understand there's eight, unless it's going to be reduced to seven because of the step, because of the recusal. And at the end of the day, this application would need five affirmative votes to be approved. So we're board of adjustment. We're going through the same procedures, the same process, the same kinds of questioning, but there are those procedural differences in terms of who can participate. Class 1 and Class 3 cannot. So with that, we can certainly proceed unless there are some questions.
Yep, and Mr. Rego, would you have to swear in, Mr. Pollan?
Yeah, if you could raise your right hand with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
My name is Rick Pollan. It's P-O-L-A-N-D.
Thank you, Mr. Pollan.
Okay, and Mr. Pollan, I think you wanted to defer to Don to give maybe just a little background of the, of the company first.
Yes, that would be best.
Okay, so.
Can we indicate what Mr. Pollan's role is with the applicant?
I'm engineering, I'm engineering manager at Blue Blade Steel and I oversee maintenance activities and plant and facilities.
Okay, thank you.
And then Don, why don't we have you sworn also then?
Oh, we're going to do two at once or?
No, no, we'll do Don first and then move into the operational.
All right, so you want to swear in someone else right now as well without Mr. Pollan testifying first?
Yeah, and then we'll have Mr. Pollan testify second.
Okay, okay. With regard to this application, do you also swear that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
I do.
Okay, can we have your full name and spell your last name, please?
Don Lindworth, that's L-I-N-D-E-W-I-R-T-H.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm Vice President of Manufacturing at Blue Blade Steel and I've been there for about 20 years now.
Okay, and Mr. Lindworth, if he could give the board a little background on Blue Blade Steel, its history in Kenilworth. And I know Rick will touch on more of the technical items and the reasons for this, but just a little background on what your company does.
Sure. Blue Blade Steel is a privately owned company. It's been owned and operated by Jerry Shaw. He bought the company in the 1970s. He moved, and it was in Newark at that time. He moved it to Kenilworth in.
He moved it to Kenilworth in, in 1985, I believe, somewhere around there. Uh, we've gone through a number of building expansions, uh, since we originally built the, uh, or purchased the, uh, the lot. I think the last expansion was in 2003 or 2004 time period. Our process is a heat treating process, we heat treat stripped steel, uh, the steel is used, um, throughout the country to various applications, some of the more common applications are like trial blades, putty knives, uh, bandsaw blades, things like that. We do have some automotive applications, uh, the process is, um, we purchase steel, we heat treat it and then set, and send it back out to our, our customers who stamp it. The heat treating process is various furnace equipment, uh, where we heat the steel strip up and cool it back down and that, and that heat treats, uh, creates a, a different metallurgical structure that is tougher and, and, and more suitable for, for the applications.
And approximately, how many people do you employ?
Okay, so we have, uh, in the factory operations, hourly personnel were, uh, 15, 16 people and that's spread across three shifts. Uh, the first shift is, uh, like 10 people, second shift is, uh, four or five, and the third shift is just three. We also have, uh, six or seven administrative or management type people that also operate out of that facility.
And again, you've, you've indicated that, uh, the company's been in Kenilworth for many years. Why is this, the, the Kenilworth and the location good for your company and, and Rick will touch on more of the specifics of it, but why these upgrades are important and for you to remain there?
Well, uh, Kenilworth's been, uh, you know, it's been a real good, uh, location for us, it's, it's, you know, relatively local to the trucking area. You know, we have, uh, there, there, you know, there's not as many steel companies in, in the area now, but there used to be and we're close to the roads, we have good, uh, labor force, there are a number of, uh, laborers that come out of the Kenilworth area here, um, the, um, does that answer your question?
Yeah, just generally, yes.
Yep.
So I have no further preliminary questions of Mr. Lindworth at this time.
Any board member have a question for Mr. Lindworth?
And again, this, uh, Mr. Pollan will touch on some of the specifics.
Sure, I don't see anyone.
I can't tell you what the, uh, you know, the nitrogen and hydrogen are used for, it's, it's their inert gases that, that are necessary in heat treating, uh, application. You know, we cover the material with nitrogen gas and that's an inert gas, nitrogen is, um, non-reactive to, uh, you know, to metal and so it, so it won't allow it to oxidize, nitrogen is, uh, is in the air that we breathe, uh, air is 70% nitrogen and we use it in its liquefied form and then it's vaporized into its gaseous form and, and put into the furnace.
Yes, uh, we can proceed with Mr. Pollan?
Okay, I am Mr. Pollan, you've been sworn in already, again, if you can indicate to the board your position with Blue Blade and let's talk specifically about, uh, the approvals that we're seeking here and the, the tanks that are looking to be installed. And as I indicated in my opening, that product is already there, this is just an upgrade and, and modernization. And I know we talked a little bit also about the, the generator, the small size of the generator that's, that's here. And you're muted.
Sorry about that, can everybody hear me here? All right, so, uh, yeah, I mean, the, the company's growing and it's become part, um, we've had a need to expand and, and increase our gas tanks to limit the amount of times or the amount of refills. So going from maybe three times a week, uh, down to once a week or once every two weeks would help us to carry more gas onsite so that we can continue to run our furnaces. These furnaces run 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and they have to be in a nitrogen, hydrogen atmosphere in order to produce the metal to the satisfaction and requirements and quality that our customers that we provide the material to need. Uh, the generator that we're looking to, looking for is, uh, we have one piece of equipment, it's, um, needs to run 24 hours a day and if there's a power failure, it needs to run a small pump to keep circulating some water. So it's really not a very large generator, it wouldn't, it generates 60 amps, that's it. It's a small, wouldn't even run on your household, it's a small little, uh, Kohler generator, 60 amps, uh, and it's just running a small circulating pump, a small blower and it, we put 110 volt outlet so that if we need to put in a, a light so that we can see in that area when we're working or doing some work in that area, we have ability to get 110 volt light out.
And the, uh, with respect to the, the product that you get, you have both of these gases at your location at the present time, correct?
That is correct, yes, we currently have nitrogen and hydrogen onsite.
Okay, and, uh, just generally, uh, describe, I think the hydrogen is in tubes and it's now going to be replaced with a tank, is that correct?
That's correct, so we have our hydrogen, it's, uh, stored onsite in, uh, what they call tubes or submarines. They're longer circular tubes, uh, it's stored in a gaseous form, uh, but there's limitations on how much we can store onsite with those tubes. So with the volume that we're looking to increase to, uh, it made better sense for us and for the people that supply the gas to us to go to a cryogenic form of hydrogen and put it in a liquid tank.
Yeah, and then with respect to the nitrogen?
The nitrogen, it's, the tank is going to get slightly larger, but again, it would increase volume, our, our, we have, you know, we're running 24/7 on the furnaces and we have to keep the atmosphere in the furnaces at all times, uh, so it's just, again, it's just that, you know, increase in volume, increase in production, we need the more, we'd like to increase the size of the tank so that we can hold more onsite and have less fill times with the suppliers.
And just briefly, and I know, uh, Mr. Deck will touch on this a little, little further, but with respect to the safety and protocol and the like, you have these now, you have certain protocol, uh, and frankly inspections, uh, and, uh, the installation, I believe, you've indicated is actually done by the suppliers, is that correct?
That's correct, the, the people that provide us the gases will do the installation and they'll oversee the contract, they'll oversee all installation and installation of all the safety equipment and safety valves.
Right, and from your standpoint, I know Mr. Deck will touch on it, you've looked, you've read the reports and, uh, and I know there were some things and Mr. Deck will touch on it with the, with the dumpster location like, but, um, one of the items, uh, that is noted, I think there's a minor parking, we're not changing the amount of parking, but, uh, onsite, I think we may, there's an existing condition where maybe a handful of parking space is short. Do you find the, at your location, I know when I've been there, there's always, uh, adequate parking, but more than sufficient parking under your present configuration for, for, uh, your employees?
Yes, yes, as Mr. Lindworth already, uh, alluded to, the, uh, we only have, on first shift, it's like 15 people onsite. Uh, second shift is six or eight and third shift is only four, three or four. So, yeah, we have ample parking space for the employees, office personnel and, uh, any visitors that would want to show up and.
And then with, yeah, I was going to say, and so generally the operation of Blue Blade is not going to change in connection with this, this application? Generally, the, the number of employees, amount of deliveries and the like?
No, no.
And if anything, the, the deliveries of the product, when I say the product, the hydrogen and the nitrogen will be lessened?
Yes, that's correct, instead of going from three times a week, bringing in trailers to reload the system, we'll go down to hopefully once or ma, once a week or maybe once every two weeks.
Okay, great, I have no further questions at this time, Mr. Pollan?
Okay, does any board member have any questions of Mr. Pollan? And Mr. Mazzio, I see your hand up.
Does the method of delivery for these tanks change at all? You know, you're saying you're reducing the trips from three down to pos, to one, uh, are bigger trucks, anything, anything different as far as that's concerned?
The only thing that might change is the hydrogen truck, instead of bringing a, uh, a, a gas truck which has the same tubes that we currently have onsite, they'll probably bring a truck that's, uh, similar to our nitrogen, which is more like a tanker, that will pump the cryogenic fluid into the tank. So other than that, no, the, just the shape of the trailer that it's towing, but the truck size will be exactly the same.
Mr. Pantina, go ahead.
So, so between Mr. Pollan and Mr., uh?
Lindworth.
Lindworth, all right, sorry, excuse me, um, you mentioned that the, the products are going to go from gas to liquid. So how does that affect, um, um, I don't know, I guess handling is going to be done by professionals anyway, but how does that affect, uh, the surroundings? I mean, is it a bigger hazard, is a more, you know, what, what?
No, no, I don't believe it's a bigger hazard, um, one is a liquid, in a liquid form, which is pumped into a tank that's designed to handle cryogenic material. Uh, the way it's evapor, the way it turns into a gas is when it's cryogenic, we put it through an evaporator. So basically it goes through just a series of fins, so if you could picture a radiator and it just, as it warms up, because it's cryogenic, as it warms up, it converts to gas and it comes into the building as a gas, so that's the only difference.
Okay.
It's handled by professionals, it's brought in, you know, they, they have all the safety procedures in place, they, the fill mechanism is maybe just a different type of hose, but it's the same type of, it's the same principle.
Is the fact, is the fact that, um, you, you both said you, uh, well, the, the business has been here for, forever and, uh, the tanks have been here for some time, is it the, the fact that, um, you are now upgrading? Are the safety features or the enclosures at this point in time, um, more, um, I guess, uh, lack of a better word, more better, better than what you had there before?
I don't know if they're better, they'll be, they'll be the most up-to-date type of systems, um, the, the companies that we buy our gas from, they're going to be in charge of following, you know, installing that equipment and they follow what's called the NFPA standard and for our case, it's NFPA 55, uh, but their safety standards are, you know, following that and they'll put in all the valves. They, they supply all of the equipment and they do all the install.
And it remains, it's their equipment, we lease the equipment from them, so they, they put all the safety, uh, protocols in, they inspect the tanks all the time. I think to answer your question, the handling of the liquid is much more efficient, both for delivery standpoint and also for usage. Uh, we've, we do have an increase in our consumption in, in usage of both of those gases because of some of the, uh, more stringent quality requirements that we're getting from our customers. So you need more atmosphere to keep the, the steel, uh, a higher quality.
Okay, thank you, thank you both.
Any other questions? All right, I don't see anyone, um, Mr. Hale, you want to?
Yes, I'd now like to move on to our site engineer, and where is he?
He's here.
He's in the upper right, Mr. Ed.
Okay, um, could you raise your right hand, please? Uh, with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
I do.
Good, could you state your name, spell your last name, please?
Edward, middle initial, last, last name Deck, D-E-C.
I know you've been here many times, Mr. Deck, um, you're still a licensed engineer?
Yes, and a professional answerer.
That's fine.
I would offer Mr. Deck as an expert, uh, in those fields.
Yes, let's move on.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Deck, if you could take the board through the plan that your office prepared and then you can on to address the, uh, Harbor Consultant.
Certainly, um, I don't know if the, uh, I have, uh, yeah, plans here that I could, um, if everybody could see that, I could go through the plans. Uh, that sheet one of three entitled preliminary and final site plan, 123 North Eighth Street, Lot 201, Block 60, Barrel of Kenilworth, Union County, New Jersey. This is the, uh, coverage sheet which has an aerial photograph on the left-hand side, uh, the center has the, uh, 200-foot radius map and to the right is a zoning map, we are in the, um, industrial zone, uh, all the adjoining properties are in the industrial zone. And, uh, the property is approximately two and a quarter acres, um, 95,000 square feet. We have, uh, on that zoning chart to the lower left-hand corner of Sheet 1, we've listed, uh, all the criteria, the requirements for the industrial zone and as you go through the, uh, chart on the existing and proposed column, you'll see some asterisks next to the numbers, what those signify is that, uh, they are pre-existing, uh, non-conformities and I'll go through those real quick, the first one is the side setback, I will show you where that occurs on the, existing condition plan. I'll zoom in here a little bit, it's along the northerly side of the building. We have a very close, uh, setback of the existing condition, that is going to stay the same, that's not changing. And I'll just point out at this point that nothing else is changing other than that area where the, uh, liquid nitrogen, I'm sorry, liquid hydrogen and nitrogen tanks are being placed, uh, we are also removing the existing dumpster that's up against the building and I'll show you on Sheet 3, we're putting it alongside that work, uh, workstation building. Uh, going back to Sheet 1, on the zoning chart, uh, the other existing non-conformities would be the building coverage, um, I'm sorry, that, we do meet that by just the, uh, less than 1%, but we are within the allowable. Then the next would be the lot coverage, we exceed the 80%, um, the open space ratio is the inverse of the, uh, lot coverage and we exceed to 20%, we don't meet that, not that we don't exceed it. Uh, number of parking stalls, I have the parking calculation below, below the lower left-hand corner of the zoning chart. Uh, our calculations show that, uh, the requirement for the use in the area of the building is 54, we have 39 stalls at the site as both Mr. Lindworth and Mr. Pollan testified to, the number of employees, uh, does not require, um, anywhere near what is, uh, required, let alone what we're providing. Also, if you want, uh, to see what the parking looks like, you can take a look at that aerial photograph, the left-hand side, you can see the cars, um, parked there, right there, uh, and you can see that there's no congestion, there's plenty of room for circulation of all the equipment, uh, being brought to the site. Other than that, I would like to start, I guess, to go to the, uh, Board Engineers Review Letter. If, uh, Mr. Hale, if you think we, at that time, we could go?
Maybe on the plan again, just show the location of the existing hydrogen tubes and.
Sure.
And then same with the, uh, same with the, uh, nitrogen. And then also, again, just touch on, because I know there was comments, I think Mr. O'Brien commented on the, on the dumpster and I know we can get to that, but just want to highlight those, those.
Those areas, certainly, uh, first I'll show you where the proposed generator is going to be, it's going to be next to the cooling tower and on Sheet 3, you'll see that, the, um, dumpster, uh, this trash compactor will be removed and we will be proposing a dumpster between the existing steel building here and the southerly property line, which will be up against the existing fence. And here.
Mr. Deck, do you mind if I ask a question about the generator?
No, go ahead.
Thank you, um, one of the witnesses earlier said that this was a 60 amp generator, it sounds like it's a portable generator, is that correct?
It's not portable, it is, it's a stationary, uh, we, we don't want it to go for a walk. Uh, so it, it'll be a stationary, uh, generator, it's just a drop-down in place, it's about the size, it's about the size of a desk.
I'll hold off further questions, thank you.
No problem. Back to Sheet 2. The area where I have my cursor is the existing nitrogen and hydrogen location, those long tubes, as Mr. Pollan called them submarines, is the existing hydrogen, gas hydrogen location. And immediately to, adjoining it to the north is the nitrogen tank along with the evaporators. As you can see, we have an access point from both North 10th Street and from North 8th Street. Circulation is not going to be an issue with either the pedestrian or the employee traffic or the traffic that will be generated, which as Mr. Pollan testified to, will be reduced to service those two units of the hydrogen and nitrogen. At this point, I am going now to go to, I guess, I'm gonna go to Sheet 3 and I'm, we'll begin to start the, addressing the Engineers' Review Letter, Mr. Hale, that's?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay. The Engineers' Review Letter details what is being proposed and what is being removed. As I showed you on Sheet 2, both nitrogen and hydrogen will be replaced with new units. And as soon as I have my list of how that'll be done, here it is. The, the nitrogen tank, it will be removed along with the evaporators and the existing storage tubes. That was on the existing Sheet 2, is in this area here. It'll be replaced with concrete pads and both where the new liquid nitrogen area will be and also where the new liquid hydrogen area will be. This fill pad will serve as a pad for the trucks. The weight of the trucks will have that surface concrete pad, which will be able to support that heavy load that's going to be brought there. The work will be done by three separate entities, all coordinated by the supplier of the equipment. There'll be a construction service that'll be doing the concrete pads, the fencing around the units, the bollards, and all the related construction work for placement of the equipment. And then there'll be a separate entity that will be working on the nitrogen and a separate entity that'll be working on the hydrogen. One would be the Air Products Engineering and the other would be Mesa North America. And as Mr. Lindmer said, these are units that are, they are being constructed, supplied and then serviced and owned by those different entities. And they'll be leased to the Blue Blade Steel for their processes. And I'll continue with Mr. Vinaigre's letter. So Sheet 1 and 2 describes in Mr. Vinaigre's letter what is going to be removed and what will be replaced. The parking, I think, was answered sufficiently as far as the number of employees that are required at the site as both Mr. Lindmer and Mr. Pollan testified to. The processes are there to provide a better, better material and for their customers, not to produce more. So there'll be not an increase in the number of employees or any other type of expansion to the building. The dumpster location on Sheet 3 will be taken from where the trash compactor is shown on the plan and will be proposed alongside the building. We're calling it proposed dumpster enclosure. There is a comment that I'll kind of touch on, that was in the planner's letter. There's no detail of that and he's correct. We do describe it as a 12-by-12 dumpster enclosure with a fence. As we were looking at the placement of that, we feel that we might be able to reduce the fencing on that, but I will get into more detail on the fencing and the dumpster itself with the planner's review letter. The stop bar and stop sign, which is a recommendation made by the board engineer, will be placed at the exit of the site on North 8th Street. The ingress, secret point on 10th does have the fence. So that is really mainly used for access, for supplies, not as a daily entranceway for the employees. The, so we agree to that recommendation. The bollards will be something that is part of the installation of the entire system, both systems, and that is shown, I believe, on the plans that were submitted to the construction department for the construction permits. And they do have details of the bollards and details of the concrete pad thicknesses, rebar types and configuration. That could be submitted as evidence if the board feels that, but they are part of the application package at the construction office. They are not made part of this application. The, that would cover items number 6, 7, and 8. And previous coverage, as noted in this review letter, does not increase. So the increase, there's no increase in stormwater runoff. And we're not proposing any improvements for that. No changes in grade and we are asking for a lighting waiver. Since nothing to the building or to the parking lot is being changed or revised. I can go on to the planner's letter or if there are any questions at this point, I'd be glad to answer those.
Well, do you wanna just get through both if that's?
Sure.
Some overlap particularly with respect to the dumpster.
Correct. The variances that we will be requesting are the storage of the outdoor storage of the materials, hazardous materials. The lot coverage, open space ratio and the parking spaces in the side yard, those 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 variances are part of our application. As we go on to the planner's letter of June 15th, on Page 1, that's noted as far as the variance that we would need for the outdoor storage of hazardous chemicals. Also, the outdoor storage of the dumpster, the solid waste area. And in that section, Page 2, as noted by the planner, as the solid waste and if stored outdoors, placed in metal receptibles, we are complying with that. The screened refuge area, we not be located in front yard, we comply with that. The storage area shall be surrounded by three sides of solid, uniform fencing or wall. That would be something, I think, again, it's noted, there's no plans submitted and that is correct. And I think we would like to ask for a waiver as far as having fencing on all four sides, since it can be seen on Sheet 3 with the location of the closed dumpsters. There is a fence immediately to the south of our dumpster pad. We'd probably connect the side of our dumpster location to that fence. And it'd still be, I guess you could say, a four-sided enclosure, but really would only be three sides that would be constructed for the use of the pad. We would have a gate in the front that we could have the access to the dumpster areas. The dumpster would be picked up and emptied as required. And the, Mr. Pollan, I'm sure can answer how many times that would have to be done a week, but depending, I imagine, on the usage, that's something that could be easily rectified as far as how many times it needs to be removed. And should be noted that the area and property immediately to the south of our site where the dumpster is located is also an industrial area. So we are not really having any adverse impact to the adjoining properties with the location. We will provide a five-foot-high or six-foot-high fence surrounding that. I believe the other issue was that the requirement of a minimum landscape area. We are requesting a waiver for that since the entire area is paved now. The whole area is an industrial area and it is well hidden, I guess you could say, between existing steel building and the buildings to our south. So we feel that the need for a landscape screened area is not necessary in this case. And I believe, going through this quickly, addressing those points, I believe those were the main points of both the engineers and the planner's letter.
Thank you, Mr. Dec. And Mr. Chairman, we will have our professional planner that will address the requests for the variance. So I have no further questions at this time, Mr. Dec.
Greg, you're muted.
Sorry about that, thank you. Yeah, so I was asking if any board member has any questions for Mr. Dec, otherwise we can proceed. Mr. O'Brien, go ahead.
If no board members have questions, Chairman.
Yeah, I don't see anyone, Mr. O'Brien, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dec, you were going through the zoning review actually dated June the 15th, which lists the whether or not this application requires waivers or variances from the land use ordinance. So you stated, I just wanna recap that, you went through that a little, little quickly for me. So the refuge storage area is going to be enclosed, it's gonna be enclosed with what?
A six-foot-high fence on three sides. We would like to utilize the fence that is to the south of us as one section of that enclosure.
Is the adjoining fence six foot high?
I'm pretty sure it is. It's a chain link fence.
And what will the six-foot-high fence on your side consist of?
I haven't determined that yet, but I don't know whether it'd be a solid, board-on-board type wood fence or a chain link fence with the slats to fill in the openings.
The ordinance does require a solid, uniform fence. If you wish to do a chain link, you're gonna have to let the board know about.
I, I really don't think we need to have anything of, you know, aesthetically pleasing, because it's really hidden very well from the street and adjoining properties. I think just the chain link fence, if that requires a waiver, I would request the board to grant that, be a chain link fence with the fence slats put in.
And then the gate will consist of what?
It's 12-foot-wide pad. So we would have a two, if I remember correctly, usual dimension is two, two-foot, two-and-a-half-foot wide gates that would open up. And then the dumpster would be taken out through that. It might have to be larger depending on the size of the dumpster, but that's something I'll coordinate with the owner.
And that would be chain link as well?
Yep.
And that gate is 12 feet wide, you said?
Well, no, I, the gate, depending on the size of the dumpster, that will be placed there, we'll have to size the gate. And it'll be not one gate, but two gates that would open up for the access.
And what's, because you're so close to the property line, you did note that next door is an industrial property, which it is, but can you identify exactly what's next door? Is it their picnic area, is there parking areas, it's not a building?
Well, yeah, let me look, if we go to, I'll, let me go to the aerial photograph on Sheet 1. If I can get that now. I think I lost it. Well, if the board, if you could look at the aerial photographs on Sheet 1. Oh, great. If you can zoom in on the photograph. Looks like, it looks like it's a wood of area of some sort.
Yeah, I'm unable to make it out online as well, it's a tree area.
Yeah.
So again, could it be their picnic area and now they're gonna have a dumpster next to it?
I don't, let's see. There's certainly a buffer of that tree area.
If I may?
Is that Don?
No, that's Robert Grimaldi.
Oh, okay, thanks, Robert.
Kevin, that buffered tree area is the back of that other company. Really, there's nothing there at times when that company, that adjacent company has overflow of pallets, they end up back over there. That's nobody's picnic area, except for a couple of deer that hang out there. Nobody's picnic area.
Thank you, Mr. Grimaldi.
Steven, can I chime in? It's Rick.
Oh, yeah, Rick.
Yeah, so the, the property next door is Preferred Packaging. They don't use that back area, that's the back of their building. It's, it's overgrown with weeds and there's a rather large tree that's kind of fallen apart. We've actually trimmed ourselves for them. They don't use that back area other than just storage, trash and maybe some skids or something back there. But there's, I've never seen anybody back there in the time that I've worked there. And the fence that's to the south that Mr. Dec is talking about is six-foot-high. It's over six-foot-high.
Chairman, the board should make a note that a chain link fence for a solid waste enclosure would require a variance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Hale?
So there's no further questions, Mr. Dec? But then if we could move on to our professional planner, Nicholas Graviano?
Sure.
I see Nick there.
Okay, could you raise your right hand, please? With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
I do.
Could you state your name again and spell it for the record? Spell your last name for the record.
Yes, my first name is Nicholas with an H, last name Graviano, G R A V as in Victor, I A N O.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Graviano, I know you have testified before this board, but if you could give briefly your credentials?
Yes, I am a partner and planner with Graviano and Gillis Architects and Planners. We're located at 101 Crawford's Corner Road in Holmdel, New Jersey. I hold a bachelor's degree from Rutgers University, a master's degree in city and regional planning from Rutgers University, and a law degree from Temple University. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, hold an AICP certification and have testified before approximately 100 boards in 16 different counties in the state of New Jersey.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would offer Mr. Graviano as a licensed professional planner?
Yes, unless I hear objection from any board member, I think we can move forward with the, with that.
All right, great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Graviano, if you could please now give the board the proofs in connection with the variances associated with this application. You've obviously looked at the site, plans that were submitted and have heard the testimony this evening.
Certainly, before I begin the testimony, I'd just like clarification on Mr. O'Brien for the variance that he just needed, just stated needed to be required for the trash enclosure?
Sure, the citation is 120-17.31C for Charlie.
Okay. Okay, so thank you for that, Mr. O'Brien, appreciate it. So what you have before you this evening is a application by Blue Blade Steel located in Block 60, Lot 2.01 in the I industrial zone. The applicant is requesting site plan approval with associated C variances as well as D variances to allow for the introduction of as well as D variances to allow for the introduction of new hydrogen tanks and a new nitrogen tank on the site. As stated in previous testimony, hydrogen and nitrogen are currently on the site. And Blue Blade Steel fabricates a wide array of steel products for numerous industries and businesses nationwide. This application is a result of the need to meet the steel quality needs of Blue Blade's clients. So you heard Mr. Deck go through the existing conditions variances. The site has a number of pre-existing conditions, none of which are being augmented by this application. These conditions include side yard setback, minimum, maximum lock coverage, open space ratio, and deficient parking spaces. These are all existing conditions variances that can be granted due to the existing conditions and exceptional situations uniquely affecting this piece of property. And strict application of the borough's regulations would result in practical difficulties and exceptional undue hardship upon the applicant of this property. The variance that was just indicated by Mr. O'Brien, that could be granted under the C2 criteria where hardship does not need to be demonstrated, which must be demonstrated that it relates to a specific piece of property. Here you have an industrial use that's existed on the property since 1985. It advances the purposes of zoning, A, promotion of general health and welfare of the community, as well as G, sufficient space and appropriate location for a variety of industrial uses to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. The granting of that relatively minor variance creates no substantial impairment of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Now we move on to the more substantial relief that the applicant requests this evening, which are the D variances that are indicated in Mr. O'Brien's letter, specifically related to the outdoor storage of the tanks, the bulk storage of flammable materials on the site, as well as the outdoor storage of the flammable materials on site. So those are three variances, D variances that the applicant requires. And with the D variances, the board has the power to grant them in particular cases and for special reasons. Promotion of the general welfare, which is the zoning purpose, which most clearly amplifies the meaning of that term, "special reasons." So the benefit to the general welfare in non-inherently beneficial use applications derives not from the site for itself, but the development of a site in the community that's particularly suited for the very enterprise that is proposed. Additionally, moving on to negative criteria, the board can't grant the variance unless the applicant demonstrates that relief can be granted without showing that there's substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. So as I stated, this is located in an industrial zone. It permits a wide array of industrial and commercial uses, manufacturing, public garages, automobile repair shops, storage warehouses, gas stations, automobile service stations. All of these uses have some sort of flammable component or combustible component that are in conjunction with that business. And these businesses are safeguarded by building code and other fire safety control mechanisms that help these things coexist on the site safely. And the site is no different. You know, hydrogen and nitrogen have existed on this site since the 80s. And the applicant is simply seeking to modernize their facility. So with respect to the particular suitability on the site, the site has been home to the use since 1985. It's a lawfully existing permitted use that requires the use of an outdoor storage of both nitrogen and hydrogen tanks and has utilized them since the 80s. You also heard how Kenner Works geographic location provides excellent access to the highway network and the distribution of its products throughout not only our region, but the country as a whole. So here you have an existing manufacturing facility and industrial district that permits manufacturing uses. So clearly, this is particularly suited for the applicant's proposal. Now, with respect to the advances, advancement of the purposes of zoning in the municipal land use law, this proposal helps advance purpose A, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use of lands in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And that's done through the modernization of an existing industrial facility with current systems and equipment that are the more not-modern norm in the business. Additionally, this applicant is an established business and employer in the borough, which also promotes the general welfare of the community. Then lastly, it helps fulfill purpose G, to provide sufficient space and appropriate location for a variety of industrial uses to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. When reviewing the Borough Master Plan, Section 5, Page 22, with respect to industrial goals, indicates a desire to provide adequate infrastructure to meet the needs of industry. And here you have an applicant seeking to modernize its business and needs this infrastructure within the property to meet the needs of its industry. Moving on to the negative criteria of the D variances, there's no substantial impairment of the zone plan or zoning ordinance with the tanks that will be stored on the property. It's an industrial district with an industrial use. And as I stated before, many uses in the district sell or store hazardous materials. So the negative criteria is certainly met in this case. You look at some of the historic legal decisions in terms of D variances. And then the Alpine Tower case versus mayor and council. It was determined that hardship is shown where more sophisticated equipment requiring new construction is needed to continue a business. So in conclusion, you have a use here that is particularly suited for the site. It advances purposes of zoning A and G in the MLUL. It advances the goal of the master plan in relation to meeting the needs of industry in the community. It's consistent with the land use plan of the municipality, and it does not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Graviano. Mr. Chairman, no questions at this time?
Okay, is any, well, let me start with the board. Does any board member have any questions for the planner? I don't see anyone. Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Veneger, any questions?
No.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Hale, is anybody going to address my planning letter dated the 6th of July?
That's the second one that was sent, Kevin?
That's one that I sent that I think it was Tuesday morning or noon time or so.
Okay. Maybe if you could just point out the key items that you want us to address out of, let me just see. I have that here. Let me just. Nick and Ed, I can send it to you.
Mr. Hale, would it be easier for you if I just went to what?
Yeah.
What's left of the questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Chairman of board, this is in my planning report, which was dated the 6th of July. Planning comments are listed on page two. And I'm going to skip over 1, 2, 3. Been addressed, number four, applicant to confirm there's no other proposed changes to the site beyond the chemical tanks, the generator, and the solid waste enclosure. Is that correct, Mr. Hale?
That's correct. Right, Mr. Deck?
And the generator that's in the front and the stop signs and dumpster location.
Number five, the applicant should provide details of the tank installation, what surrounds the tanks. The application mentions bollards. Site plan shows what appears to be a fence around a tank installation. Please clarify. A detail showing what is proposed would be helpful for the board to understand the application. In addition to that, the land use ordinance requires an eight-foot wall surrounding the tanks. Since there's no detail, we don't know if that's there or not. So perhaps describe what surrounds these tanks.
The, I do have the plans and I'll quickly just show you what's part of the construction application jacket. These plans were part of that, not part of this submission with my plans. But they do have the details. But as far as an eight-foot-high wall, no, that's not shown or proposed anywhere.
So what surrounds these tanks? Can you, you're referring to items that were submitted for construction permits? This board and I have not seen them, so we have no idea what surrounds its tanks.
Ed, are you able to address that or perhaps?
I'm just looking to see if there's something on here that indicates that there's a wall around the maybe Rick Pollan might be able to give us some more information on that, but I do not see anything as far as a wall surrounding.
I think the existing nitrogen tank has a chain-link fence around it. And that's eight-foot-high. So I'm assuming, I don't have, I don't know if it's on the drawings. I don't see the drawings. But the, I think the new enclosures, the new tanks, both the nitrogen and the hydrogen will have the fence around it.
Yes, I believe, I've done, I believe you're right. The both, the both gas suppliers have requested that we, or required that we put fencing around their tanks with access ports, with access doors that they can get into. So, yeah. And I don't know if they specified eight-foot-high, but I can verify that. I don't think that'll be an issue to go eight-foot-high.
Okay. The application itself, not the site plan, mentions bollards in this area. Are there bollards?
The both gas, both suppliers require that there be bollards and we would put in the bollards at their specifications.
And they are shown on those plans.
Some bollards there. I don't know, I don't have the drawing in front of me, but they do specify that there'll need to be bollards there.
Right. And part of that construction application that you did, Rick, had the plans that showed the bollards.
That's correct.
But with all respect, we don't see them. We don't know what they look like and it's an ordinance issue. Can those details be provided to this board for clarification? And since the applicant is mentioning eight-foot-high fence, then there's no relief necessary because it will conform to the ordinance. And I think part of this application should show a detail as to exactly what's there to confirm what you're talking about.
That's no problem, Mr. O'Brien.
Okay. As for the item seven on my page two, the generator. Generators elsewhere in the borough are not allowed in the front yard. That does not apply at this location. So I'm just curious as to why that generator has to be at that location and can it go somewhere else?
That's the easiest place for us to be able to put it, that it has, without having to run extensive cabling and and gas lines to get to the piece of equipment we need to run. It is also covered by a bunch of hedges. There's a small pad out front and it's blocked by hedges. No one, you won't even see it.
So the gas line runs through there and that's the most convenient place to put it?
That's correct. Otherwise, I'd have, yeah, there's no other place in the building that makes sense for us. And it has to be outside.
Okay, thank you. And then jumping to item eight on page three, we talked a little while ago about the dumpster enclosure. Can a detail of that be given to the board? Which would confirm the testimony that's been given already?
Again, no problem, Mr. O'Brien.
And then lastly, item nine, the site plan refers to Lot 101, which this is, and the application refers to Lot 2.01. That should be corrected somewhere in testimony this evening.
Yeah, I think the original plan had a misdesignation. That on the resolution compliance plans will cover that.
Hey, thank you, Chairman. That covers my report. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Anything else, Mr. Deck, from your side? Does that conclude your witnesses?
I have no problems with what Mr. O'Brien is suggesting and requiring.
Okay, Mr. Hale, I meant to address, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, we have no further witnesses at this time. Obviously, any of them at a test provider here or your professionals have more questions.
Okay. Board members, does anyone have any questions for any of our witnesses? I see Mr. Pantina's hand up.
So I, I'll start off with our professionals. With the testimonies that have been provided tonight, are you, Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Veneger, satisfied with what's been heard? And your reports will be taken care of?
Yeah, I'll go first. Yeah, I didn't have many comments. The dumpsters are already, you can see them on the plans. You can see them on Google Earth. They're covered on the side of the building. I also was concerned about having the backup generator in the front yard. But it is screened. It's near where the electric service drops into the building. If you look, you'd see the overhead wires coming into the building. If this was a residential neighborhood, I would ask to move that. But the closest residential is further down the road off of Washington. So because these backup generators, they normally start them once a week just for a test fire. But the location they have it now probably has the least effect on a residential area. Since you don't have any residential across the street. Normally, I don't like to see these in the front yard, but in this particular location, it's heavily screened. And I don't think the noise coming off the generators could be disturbing any residential areas. So that's the biggest concern was the trash and the noise from the backup generator. Because the natural gas generators do have, they do make a little bit of a racket. But they are, they do come in an insulated shell. So, yeah, I mean, where they're placing the gases next to the existing facility where they have bollards. Do you, I just have one question of the operator. Do you folks, do you have a compactor also? Looks like you have a compactor and dumpsters.
I think that was being moved.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're, we have to remove the compactor.
Okay.
It's going to be taken out and we're going to just put in the roll-off dump, a small roll-off dumpster for our daily trash.
So you really?
And that 40-yard trailer is going to be removed. They're going to go away. We don't, we're not going to use that any longer.
Okay, because normally you did have a compactor, so.
That's correct.
Okay. So you're just going to go with the dumpsters that are over the roofed area near your loading docks?
That's lower. No, it'll be on the side of the shed to the south.
Well, shed, yeah, next to the loading docks, yes. Okay. No, that's my other comment. Normally, you don't like to see the backup generators. You could move them elsewhere. But if you did move it to the side, it might, the sound may reverberate off the side of the middle building and you'd disturb the residential people even more if you moved to the south side of the building.
You can see from that picture right there how hidden it is, right behind that picket.
Yeah, the concern is noise when they do fire up once a week. But again, there's no one to bother because it's industrial across the street. I'm okay.
And Mr. O'Brien, you're satisfied too, right?
Yes, Mr. Pantina, the questions in my reports have been answered. If there is a concern about the noise from the generator, the board might want to talk about perhaps a four-foot-high vinyl fence a couple of feet forward of the generator. But as Mr. Veneger says, I don't see any, it would be to the left of the driveway there. The truck in the driveway would be to the left of that. That's up to the board. I don't particularly think it's necessary. As Mr. Veneger says, the nearest residence is quite a way down North Eighth. Up to the board. But yes, Mr. Pantina, my questions have been answered.
Okay, so I have one more question for both of you, our professionals, and if the applicant wants to chime in, they can. So understanding that these tanks, these existing tanks have been on the site for a very long time and the upgrade are hopefully going to be more efficient to the applicant and handled and, I guess, protected better. My only other question is, is do you feel that what the applicant is providing best mitigates any kind of threat to the borough or minimizes any kind of threat to the borough since our ordinance does state that, you know, the materials aren't allowed anywhere in town? So I mean, I mean, ultimately, that's the final decision here on whether to So I mean, I mean, ultimately, that's the final decision here on whether to go ahead with the variance, but are you guys satisfied with what's been presented as far as best practices to minimize any threat?
Yeah, these, again, I think the applicant stated these are nitrogen tank, correct?
Yep, nitrogen and hydrogen.
Yeah, and the nitrogen is inert. Hydrogen, you know, if they, you know, they have to have their, the tanks would have to meet the safety inspections of the federal government. Hydrogen is a little bit more problematic than the nitrogen, but hydrogen, just go over, I guess you have to get the permit from the fire department and get approval from the fire department for this too.
Well, that's another, that's another good question. Have they looked at this application?
They're going to have to sign off prior to installation. You have to give a bill, they have to supply the fire department a bill of all gases on the site, and the fire department only has to sign off on that.
Okay. No further questions for me.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board have any questions? Mr. Grimaldi?
And my only statement was that as long as the fire department has their chance to review the installation prior to living here and living near there, Blue Blade is one of the quieter industrial neighbors we have in the area. So I wouldn't have any objection to what they've stated. And we've lived with the tanks and the gases right there for all this time. So it's, again, they're a fine neighbor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grimaldi. Any other board members? Hey, I'm not seeing anyone. Do you have any closing remarks, Mr. Hale?
No, I'll waive it. I'll rely upon Mr. Grimaldi's comments.
It's a good, it's a good ending, right? All right, so with that, I need to open the meeting to the public for a comment. So can I have a motion to do so?
Motion made to open it to the public.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grimaldi. Do I have a second? I see Mr. Pantina, so a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, the, this hearing is open to the public for comment. I'm assuming we are limited to anyone who's currently on the Zoom meeting, which if I'm seeing things correctly, I don't see anyone other than witnesses and board members, so. I guess, can I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
I have a motion to close.
Okay, a motion made by Mr. Grimaldi. Do I have a second?
Second.
Pantina, there you go. So a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, the public portion, the public hearing is closed, and I will entertain either further discussion or a motion to either approve or deny this applicant application. Mr. Grimaldi?
I'll make a motion to approve with the statement that the engineers are satisfied with the additional paperwork that they were looking for to be shown on the drawings. But otherwise, with those restrictions and caveats that they are professionals brought up, make a motion to approve.
And I guess it's, sorry, I was going to say, and I guess it's standard that the fire department is going to sign off on this so that we don't need to include that in a motion. Were there any other conditions or Mr. O'Brien or Mr. Rego that we heard? Okay. All right, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Back.
Okay, I see Nick's hand up, so we have a motion and a second, and we'll entertain a roll call. Madam Secretary.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Grimaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
Mr. LaDoughty?
Yes.
Mr. Colello?
Yes.
Mr. Scudary?
Yes.
Mr. Zaharchek?
Yes.
Seven, okay. The first seven count. So seven oh.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Look forward to this important, important business to continue to grow and be part of Kenner Works. So have a great night, everyone.
Just, just so you know, Mr. Hale, I guess I should have mentioned this last applicant as well, but we're not sure if there's going to be an August board meeting or not. So just wanted to make you aware in terms of memorializing the resolution.
Yeah, and we'll discuss with the, because I know there's, there's timing on getting these, the tanks installed. So we'll work with, we'll coordinate with, where's Kevin? He's right there, with, and Victor will talk to the construction department to see if, once all the approvals are in place, if they'll let them begin with the installations.
Yeah, right now, we don't have any new applications, so we're probably, you know, it's probably looking like we're not going to have a meeting, but that could change within the next two weeks. And if it does, then we would. Anyway, just wanted you to.
Mr. David?
Yes.
I think last time we had this situation, I think we just wrote, read into the minutes that if everything is satisfied and we don't have the meeting, that we would ask the, the construction department to allow them to proceed without the reading. We did something like that.
I do remember that, Mr. Grimaldi. So I mean, I personally would be okay with that. Sure, the rest of the board would be. I see Mr. O'Brien shaking his head, so. So, yeah.
Where do you go? Is that good, or am I making stuff up?
Usually, that will occur if there's something, if there's a basic application, no frills, and the zoning department's comfortable and the construction department's comfortable, that works. If, and I don't know if this, this application is a little more complex than that, but if someone's uncomfortable with saying go ahead prior to the reading, we have to respect that. But if whoever's going to sign off is okay with it prior to the reading, then that's fine. We'll leave it in the hands of whoever has to issue permits. But normally, the more complex an application is, the less likely some employee is going to want to sign off on it prior to crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. But Kevin's the person, so we'll see.
Okay. If the, if the requested revisions are brought in fairly quickly, I will discuss that with my colleagues in the building department. And if there, if there is a consensus on their part to allow this to proceed, then I would certainly convey that.
That sounds good, Kevin.
We appreciate that.
All right, well, representatives of Blue Blade, thank you for coming in and.
No, thank you. I appreciate all the time and effort you guys put into it, and it's, you know, it's, we thank you very much.
Yep, good luck with the project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all.
Okay, so we're going to move on with the agenda. Get laid here. Next item is comments for the good of the board. Does any board member have any comments for the good of the board? All right, I don't see anyone raising their hand. So next item is, we do have to follow protocol and open the meeting to the public. Can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, the meeting is open to the public. If there's anyone on the meeting who would like to say anything on the record, I guess either submit in chat or speak up. And I don't see anyone on the, on the Zoom meeting, so I don't think that's going to happen. So I will request a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Motion. Close the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mazzio. And I have a second. I'm taking Mr. Grimaldi on that one. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So moved. Lastly, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Hello, here.
Everybody.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Everybody.
Have a great night and.
Have a great night all. Have a good summer.
Take care.
You too.
Stay safe.
Yep.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.